That we can get through on time or before. So, good afternoon, everybody. I am going to call a budget meeting to order. Today is...
Yeah, and that was the...
What is today? Today is May the...
May the 17th, if you...
Yeah. 2022, and today is a budget work session, and I'm going to call this meeting to order. So, I'm now going to read all of the structure. Just, we're going to go ahead and just get started with a budget meeting. And the first item up is our budget review. It's 220297, and it's a review of major revenue and expenditures reported in the 2223 manager's recommended budget. And Keith Lane. Hi, Keith. If you want to take a...
Good afternoon, commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Do you want to begin to start? Okay. Well, thank you. We're going to go through a number of slides. I'll go through fairly quickly. If you have questions during or after, always feel free to break in with your questions. We also have an hour set aside at the end of today's meeting for, you know, a host of questions on any of the different presentations you're going to see. I think the agenda day starts with a budget overview, and then Tax Department will give a brief overview, and then Finance will give an overview of fund balance. And I think we have, in theory, an hour left for questions from the board after that. But as always, like I said, you're welcome to ask questions during the presentation or after mine. One thing I do want to note before we get started is that we took a number of questions, 30-plus questions from board members during individual meetings you had with the manager in reference to her budget. Remember, y'all had those. And the Budget Office is currently close to compiling answers for all of those questions. It may not fully answer the questions, but we have given you answers to them, and we will be delivering that nine- or 10-page document to you all either this afternoon or early tomorrow morning. Okay? And with that, Claudia, we're going to get started. Is anything you want to add?
Well, our department's manager, she has... She can go. He has. Yes. All of the departments, this is an inordinate amount of work, and they make it look seamless. And I can't thank folks enough when they do their best and give their all in some. So, thanks to Keith and David and the team.
Budget staff.
The budget team, yes.
Great budget staff, by the way.
And the departments who also comply with their very aggressive time taking.
And if I can just add, one thing that particularly impressed me with the departmental presentations is General Manager Hager and the budget team requested that each department perform a SWOT analysis. So, each department, in their presentation, expressed their strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. That was extremely helpful. And, you know, some of the deliberations that we had about the budget requests and what we included in the budget. So, really want to thank the department for all of the work they did.
Thank you, Dr. Sewell. I will say off the top of the bat, before we start anything, just keep this in your mind, in the back of the head, back of your head as you listen to this presentation. FY 2223, our estimates of revenue collection for the year upcoming is extraordinary, based off of revenue growth that has happened in 1920 and 2021, 2021 and 2122, the year we're in now. So, what we're projecting next year is extraordinary revenue growth. And I'd say that's great. The problem is, there's always a problem, is we have found an extraordinary number of needs and expenditures to take up that revenue growth. I say that because extraordinary years are extraordinary. I mean, what I mean by that is they don't happen every year. Next 2324 will probably not have the same type of revenue growth that we had this year. Just keep that in mind as you're looking at the things that we're discussing and how we're going to continue programs out into the future, past the year that we're getting ready to talk about. Manage your budget priorities, always, as continuing service levels while trying to maintain a property tax rate, flat property tax rate. We have done that in the manager's recommended budget. One of the manager's major priorities was how we're going to apply ARPA funds, not only separate what Claudia has done and proposed for the full 62 million, but certain, how we were going to apply a certain amount of that as part of the general fund operating budget. We have $6.4 million, close to $6.5 million, budgeted as part of the general fund budget of ARPA dollars to help support programs. We, one of the major priorities was supporting county employees. We have talked with you individually about that. We've had presentation. The manager talked about it in our budget presentation. We're looking at a COLA for all employees July 1st. It's a 2.5% COLA for those above $75,000, 3.5% for below $75,000 salaries. Pay-for-performance increase to 3% to 4%. That's a 3% meets expectations and a 4% exceeds expectations. This year and in past several years, it's been 2% and 3%, so we're increasing that. And then any number of focused compensation support issues that are being supported for EMS and public safety. We've had position growth. We have 36.7 new general fund FTEs, some additional FTEs in the sewer utility fund and the stormwater utility fund. Those utility funds are enterprise funds. They pay for themselves through fees. So, those new positions in the sewer utility and stormwater fund are offset by fee increases or related revenue. It's not a net cost to the county. It's the users of those funds will pay for that. We are fully funding our annual vehicle and equipment replacement schedule, and that's really important for vital departments. It's largely replacement of sheriff vehicles and ambulances, although the ambulances, David, are being bought this year because of supply chain issues. It's taken so long to get them delivered. We're ordering them this year and plans of getting them sometime late '22, '23, if not '23, '24. We are having to support, acknowledge and support increases in employee health benefits costs. Those costs go up every year. It's a little higher this year than normal, and we'll explain that, why that is. It's largely because we've underbudgeted in previous years and we're just catching up. And we are using a significant amount of additional general fund fund balance this year over past years, and we're doing that largely because we have additional fund balance available to us. We'll show you one slide on that, but that's part of the reason Susan Tzai is going to talk to you, our CFO, about fund balance in a presentation coming up. Key, important revenues that sort of drive the budget. We're not talking about every revenue, but we're talking about the big ones, the ones that have the most growth or delta. You might hear me use the word delta. Key natural growth. What we mean by natural growth, there's increase in revenue without a property tax rate. These are the numbers we're talking about. Natural growth is delta. We're looking at an additional $32 million in these key revenue sources. Property tax for the general fund is almost $14 million. Sales tax, 6.8 million. Register of deeds fees, 2.7 million. EMS fees, 3.3 million. And medical hold harmless, 5 million. Remember when I said at the beginning, this is extraordinary growth in revenues? You will not see this level of delta or natural growth in '23, '24. It's fantastic. Glad to have it. We've already spent it, but it will not be a number that you all can settle on as a delta number year after year after year. Capital financing fund gets a little bit of that growth every year as well. Property tax, delta revenue growth in the capital financing fund, which is what supports our debt service and our capital projects. 1.9 million growth in property tax, sales tax growth of 4.6 million, occupancy tax growth of 1.5 million. Occupancy tax is a perfect example of numbers that you won't see. We're just now starting to recover fully from COVID-related occupancy tax issues. In other words, people weren't coming to Durham County. They weren't traveling. They weren't staying at the hotels for two years. They really started coming back, and we had, but lowered the budget in '21, '22. We're now seeing that number increase, and we're getting back to normal. In '23, '24, that growth number won't be 1.5 million. It might be 300,000 or 600,000, half that amount. What are we looking at? This is just basically a graph version of what I just said. This is just a history of budgeted growth in sales tax and property tax. Those are the green lines, and the orange lines are actual property tax and sales tax collections. What I want you to note is you see those green lines. You see the sort of flat line and the dip. That was the Budget Office, maybe being, looking in the past with clear eyes, being overly worried about the economic effects of COVID. Remember when the world shut down and we were like, what are, people aren't doing anything? So, we, we were worried about people losing jobs and not being able to pay property tax. We were worried about people not buying things. Well, the exact opposite happened. Not only did people continue to work, they just worked differently. They continued to buy more than was what was we ever expected. So, you saw our budget numbers reflect with a significantly higher slope pattern and growth for both property tax and sales tax. Basically, COVID did not hurt us in a way, and when I say hurt us, I'm talking about Budget Office looks at revenues. Did not hurt us in any way that we have yet to see. But these are just growth numbers. Are there any questions about these graphs? Do you understand them? Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Yes, nod. Thank you.
I want to make one quick comment, and I won't do this often. If you were to reflect back to March, April, 2020, I think it was almost a free fall that was projected. Folks were saying that we would have almost, it would be flat or 30% loss. The board really pushed us hard because we tried to be aggressive. So, because of the analytics that the budget team did on historical sales taxes, we were able to have a good sense of maybe why we're, we will be a little bit higher. So, I just wanted to point that out. That was a scary period and glad it has not turned out that way.
Absolutely. Questions?
I was just going to ask, you know, since this is such an extraordinary unit, I was just trying to look back at the graph. Quick math, you know, so if we've had basically a $16 million increase in property tax through natural growth, what are the past couple of years before that? You know, I should note, can't we just look at this graph and tell?
Sure. You could look at this graph right here and see actual growth from 1920 to '21. It went from 314 to 324, so it was 10 million. From 1819 to 1920, it was 15 million or something.
Not much difference.
No, it is, it is cranked up in the last couple of years. Sales, property tax in particular, has been on a, an increased amount, growth every year over the last three or four years. And that's a testament to new apartment buildings everywhere and RTP.
Commissioner Carter, one of the primary drivers of the one-time growth are some of the other revenues that we'll talk about in a couple of slides. EMS patient fees, Medicaid hold harmless. Some of those are the ones that have provided significant growth this year that we just can't count on that. We're expecting the same amount next year, but it's that delta every year that gives us money to fund new things.
Okay.
These have, if you look at the chart on these, the key point of this is literally the graphic is showing a nice, steady, consistent line. The green dropped down in our budgeting, but you'll even see the green is taking us a couple of years to get back to where that steady trend line is.
Okay.
I will, yes, Commissioner Jacobs, chair. No, no, that was it. I'll, I have a statement, but it can wait. No, you're...
I just, I guess I'm wondering, though, about the projections related to sales tax because, you know, we don't know exactly, but a lot of people were buying things online because of the pandemic and things like that. And so, I guess, are you all taking that into consideration for projections for next year, for the upcoming year? Because, you know, you're hearing about Amazon is now, they're laying people off. They're, they're changing some of their expansion, you know, things like that. Some of the delivery services, you know, patterns of buying are changing.
Inflation's an issue, potentially an issue. There's always the, well, there is the looming specter of a recession or some slowing down of what has been in a very hot economy. I think for my projections for sales tax, I'm looking at 5% growth over this year's numbers. This year's numbers are about 15% over. So, some people might say that's too conservative. I'm still think that's fairly aggressive. So, I am not on the far end of being very aggressive in our growth levels because I would rather be a little bit safe than sorry, especially with some of the ominous is too strong with the words, some potential signs of thunderstorms ahead.
And the other part with that is that we have to remember the infusion of dollars that the federal government had to families. And, and that has slowly declined or is no longer in existence. And for the populations that were impacted by that, oftentimes more of their disposable income will then show back up in the economy, which we saw as well as other components. So, looking at, from a national public policy perspective, what's infused? And then what's on the horizon with the potential of a recession or slowed economy? We felt the 5% was a right number, as best one can do with the fake crystal ball. But that, that is a number that we felt comfortable with.
I will just add that I fully support always being conservative on estimating revenues and being more aggressive on estimating expenses so that we don't find ourselves, you know, having expenses that we can't cover in future years.
The quality of our revenue estimates are the, how close that orange line is to the green line. And that's what David was trying to explain. In the 2021 year, when we were a little overly worried, looking back in COVID, you saw that we were a little too conservative, and now we're trying to catch up. I would add, just point out that if you look from 1920 to 2023, the actuals for both of those, let's go from the orange, property tax, 314 to 348, budgeted for '22, '23, that's an increase of $30 million roughly, a little over 30, $34 million. And then if you look at the sales tax, 87.5 to 106, we'll just call that 20. That's now 50, close to $54 million annually. You have in your budget from just those two revenue sources that you didn't have three years ago. That's a lot of money annually, and we're already spending it.
And these two revenue sources, property tax, sales tax, make up about 75% of our annual revenue, and that's a good thing in a lot of ways, especially property tax because it's such a stable income, that it's always nice to have that coming in regularly every year.
Total property tax revenue growth is 15.8 million. 13.9 million goes to the general fund. 1.9 million goes to our capital financing fund per board policy that's been in effect since the mid-'80s. Tax collection rate is amazing, thanks to our tax staff. It's at 99.5%. We increased that from 99.1. We went down to 99.1 again during COVID times, worried that people were going to struggle to pay property taxes when we thought COVID had shut everything down. It hasn't, and our tax department has done an amazing job. Tax-based valuation, which drives all revenue we collect, has been increasing significantly, $2 billion from last year, '21, '22, or 4.4%. That's significant, and that looks to continue to grow in the future. What does one cent on the property tax rate bring in? $4.8 million. What is, why does this matter to you? The manager's recommended budget, in theory, is balanced right now. If you need additional funding, significant additional funding for something that you all choose to add money to, there are some revenue sources that David and I and Claudia can magically pull out of a hat, but there's a limit to that. And after that, you'll have to raise the property tax rate. If you raise it one cent, you would have an additional $4.8 million to dole out. You can do the math. Half a cent would be 2.4 million. One tenth of a cent would be $480,000 in additional revenue for additional needs. Property tax collection, this was a graph, an animated graph that David made. He was very proud of it. The point he wanted to show you in this graph, this is how much one cent, or how much our property tax collection has brought in over the years and how he wanted you to see the slopes. If you look from '13, '14 to '16, '17, you see that orange arrow. It's a fairly flat slope, but it's growing slowly. Then you see an increase in that slope. If you look at that second middle orange arrow from '16, '17 to '19, '20, and then you see it skyrocketing even more from '19, '20 to '20. That is the growth and the valuation in the county year after year. It's just picking up more and more steam. That's fantastic. Things that are fantastic year after year, my nature of line of work makes me uncomfortable because I'm waiting for the sword to drop. I don't know when that's going to happen, but it just keeps getting better and better. This is just the historical tax rate. We won't linger on this. What I want you to show, what I want you to see is that progressively over time, its valuation has increased in the county significantly. The overall county tax rate has, has consistently gone farther and farther down. That doesn't necessarily mean that the average taxpayer is paying less. It just means that the average tax rate itself has been going down. Value of the property being taxed has increased significantly. One thing to note here is that we haven't, we, each revaluation has dropped the property tax rate a little bit lower. Those are the green columns. But I suspect the next one coming up in a couple of years will see a significant drop in the revenue-neutral property tax rate because of valuation growth. The valuation growth we talk about year after year that we're noticing is from new buildings coming online. What is not being captured until revow is the value of a house sitting there that's still being taxed at $300,000, but may sell at $600,000. How much is property tax revenue bringing in for the general fund? It's $305 million. Remember, David told you property tax and sales tax alone make up 75% of our revenue. Property tax alone is $305 million for the general fund and $41 million for the capital financing fund for a total of almost $350 million. Growth in property tax revenue. What we're showing you here in this line, the orange line, is when you all have had a tax rate increase. The blue line, I think, to your question, Commissioner Carter, about how much growth in property tax revenue are you getting year after year? In each of those columns, the blue number in the column is natural growth, and then the green number is amount of new property tax revenue related to a property tax rate increase. So, for example, in '13, '14, you had natural growth of $5 million in revenue. Then you had a three-cent tax rate increase, which added another $9.1 million of property tax revenue. Does that make sense? To your point, the last several years, 1920, you sold $9.2 million of natural growth in property tax revenue. 2021, we budgeted 5.8, '21, '22, 15 million, and we're looking at 14.4 for both funds in the upcoming fiscal year. Any questions about that? We have some pretty dense slides. We're real proud of them. It may take you a second to get your head wrapped around them. You got it?
I'm going to go back and look at this, but I...
Ma'am?
We're smart ladies.
Yes, you are.
Except my math isn't that great, and I'm just look, I'm going to go back. So, I'm not going to, I'm not going to push on this now, but I just really take your cautionary advice seriously about how this is extraordinary. And on that slide early on, I thought, well, it doesn't seem that extraordinary. This slide does make me think it seems extraordinary. So, just let me ponder on that, but...
Yes, ma'am.
If I can, if I may, the, a little bit of context around what Keith was saying as being conservative and when will the, I don't know if you said cliff, but what's, what's complicated about this is, is the new norm, the, the far-left blue lines where we're getting 15 million and 14 million in natural growth a year, or are these exceptional years and we're going back to the eight or 10 million dollars of annual growth? And that's the stuff that you don't, we would love to be answering this question three years from now because we would be brilliant, we'd be able to answer it. But right now, we're just trying to navigate, what is the, is this a new norm or is this just truly exceptional couple of years?
And I will say we balance all of this because the question is, are we, are we being too conservative? I know that's, that may be some of the, if we're being too conservative considering the patterns. But the, our response is how we have increased our fund balance use level because that's gone up tremendously. And so, it was, when I saw the number, I sort of got taken aback. I was like, oh, that's a bit high. But, but whatever we do, we always feel confident that we have a backup plan if it doesn't get to that point. But if you, once we get to that conversation about fund balance, you will see that we're pushing at levels that we've not done in recent years.
We have a slide on that we'll show you. Commissioner Jacobs.
Yeah, I mean, this year for our budget works, budget retreat, we didn't have an economist come and speak to us like we often do, like Michael Walden from NC State. And I can just say, I, I listen to, I'm kind of a news junkie. And, I mean, I'm, I'm concerned about the long-term economic outlook. Anybody who does pay attention, right, we can see what's happening with the rising costs for fuel, for food, rents, and, you know, with the war in Ukraine, supply chain. Look what's happening with baby formula right now. So, I, I think we have a very uncertain future. I think from, and I raised this in a meeting that Commissioner Howerton and I were in last week. I think we're fortunate. We, the triangle has always been a little buffered with past recessions.
Absolutely.
But I think we can't ignore what's happening nationally and internationally, what is going on right now, and there's just a lot of uncertainty. And so, I, I actually hope that we are being, I think we have to be cautious because there's just so many unknowns.
We're cautious, but we always have a strategy if there's a shift. So, for instance, when COVID first hit, we froze positions. We slowed down spending. We made sure the most critical items were taken care of. So, we do plan so that we are putting, not adding more pressure to the taxpayers as we have to, but we always have a backup plan if a shift happens suddenly because we, we do feel that pressure.
You know, the, I've been here long enough to see two, two events occur that if we didn't have a backup, we'd been in trouble. And that was Katrina and then the, and COVID. If we don't have a backup, to the backup and to the backup, Durham County could be in some serious, serious trouble. So, I, I appreciate you having a strategy to, this is financial possibility of, because I've been listening to the same conversations that Commissioner Jacobs has, that we could have a downturn, and we have to be prepared for, for that. So, thank you for doing that.
We do not have a tax rate increase recommended by Dr. Sewell, county manager, for '22, '23. But this is what an additional tax rate increase would be on different house values for half cent, one cent, and two cent. This is just for information purposes only. Again, I repeat, there is no tax rate increase recommended by the county manager. Sales tax revenue, second of the two big ones, has increased $11.5 million over '21, '22 budget. That's a 12.2% increase. That's an additional almost $7 million for the general fund. That's an additional almost $7 million for the general fund and 4.65 million for the capital financing plan fund. Commissioner Burns.
My apologies for stopping you. I like Claudia, I'm not going to make it a practice, because we have seen these slides a couple of times, but one of the things that I did want to bring up, could you go back to the previous slide? Because I do want you to, okay. So, one, I remember, you know, we've done iterations of like this slide, right? We'll say that a penny is 4.8 million, right? So, and that's like five slides kind of ahead. And then we'll talk about, you know, this is what it would look like in a year on a $200,000 house, and it'll be $4.71. But I don't want it to be kind of sort of lost in a vacuum, because we talk about it sporadically in the presentation. So it would be nice, I hate to put more on staff, I would like to see, at least possibly for public consumption, you showed a slide not too long ago that showed how many tax increases we've had over 10 years. So what, that's the one. So I don't want people to think that like when we're doing this, we're talking about $2 or $4 or 28 cents. They need to know that it increased $5 a month two years ago. It increased $6 a month three years ago. It increased $4 a month last year. You hear what I'm saying? So they don't look at it and say, well, it's just $4, I have $4. It, $4 is milk for somebody. Like that is, but $50 is a meal or shoes for somebody. And when people look at it like, well, January is just $4. No, three years ago, it is, it might have just been four, but compounded now, that's $50 on the family. And we're going to do appraisals in a couple of years. So we're looking, and I'm not going to do the math, somebody right now with kind of sort of this, with only, you know, $1,800 tax bill could in 2025 be looking at a $6,000 tax bill. That's a big tax bill if you're, if, if we keep moving up. And then I also want to make sure that, because I've heard some people in the public do comparisons. You know, they want to compare us to Wake County, they want to compare us to Orange County. And yeah, I see your face changing, because like their tax rate is 60 cents, ours is 72. And then we got to, you know, do, and I'll end here, we're thinking about the bond, that's two and a half cents. If we do a raise here, and then next year, we already know, we're probably going to have to do 1% for the school. So we'll be at 80 cents on $100. I just want, I, I would love to see where we could put some of this, not as sporadically spread out, put it in something that's consumable, and really let people know this, your tax rate has gone up every year. We're going to do appraisals. This is what your tax bill might look like or could look like if we do these things. I know we're going to do it for the bond, but I think it's important for people to understand it now. We don't have to do that for this presentation, but I think this is about the third or fourth time that I've kind of sort of seen this, and it's kind of chopped up, and that message gets missed. So those are just my two cents. And I'm sorry, and I, again, not going to interrupt you anymore, David, Claudia, and Keith.
That's a fantastic point. If you look at this graph alone, there's a 4.3 cent tax rate increase cumulative over the last five years. So to your point, it's not just one cent or half a cent, looking at the next tax rate increase, there's been 4.3 cents plus a revow during that time. So a house not only had a tax rate increase, we can work the math out, we will present to you a table either in an email or an answer to a question. We can get that and give you an idea of what it might be. There are different valuations on that, but that's a great thing to point out. Sales tax, $11.5 million, we went through that. These are the other key revenue that we wanted to point out, state hold harmless funds. This is the money that we lost from Article 44 sales tax that the state took away from us, but they also took on the burden of taking on Medicaid costs that the county used to pay. Back in the day, way back when, we used to support Medicaid, and Medicaid cost for county costs was outgrowing and outpacing the revenue we were collecting from Article 44. So the state did this for everybody, took it over, took the sales tax, but they also had in a provision, at the point that the sales tax that they took from us, Article 44, started making more money than they paid out in Medicaid costs for Durham County, we would get that money back. And that's what has happened, and that number has jumped tremendously, because sales tax has grown tremendously in the county over the last couple of years, while Medicaid costs have not grown significantly. So that number just a couple of years ago, state hold harmless was in the two to $3 million. Last year, it was $9 million. Or, yes, it was nine, almost nine, and I think I'm budgeting it at $9 million this year. Why am I not going up? I'm, I'm going up to $9 million and matching what we actually collected last year, because David and I are a little worried that Medicaid costs may increase due to COVID-related costs that we haven't seen yet, delayed. Having said that, that's a huge number, an additional $5 million without us doing anything. That's over one cent on the tax rate. Fantastic. I don't know that we're going to see $5 million increases in that number year after year after year. EMS patient fees are going up $3.2 million. Part of that is the manager's recommended, along with EMS recommending this. A fee change to sort of match our neighbors, we're going from 157% billing to 200% billing, that's going to increase that revenue source by $3.2 million. Again, in '23, '24, we probably won't change those fees maybe a little bit, so the increase in revenue might be 300, 500,000, but it won't be 3.24 million. Register of deeds fees have gone up $2.7 million. Why has that happened? A lot of people are buying houses, and this is directly related to the cost of housing, turnover of real estate documents, that's based on the value of the sale of a house. That number's gone up $2.7 million. That won't continue indefinitely as a delta number, 2.7 million year after year. Oxytocin taxes finally getting back to normal. We had budgeted lower in 2021, '22, and we're now seeing all our hotels and stuff come back to life, but we won't see one and a half million dollars growth every year in that number unless something fundamentally changes. Last one we want you to see is investment revenues. There's the good and the bad. Interest rates are increasing, that's bad for our long-term debt instruments that we might issue soon coming up. It's good for money we have in the bank, because we make a little bit of interest income on that, so that's an increase to 500,000. That's $13 million in additional revenue delta without a tax rate increase. And as David wrote, these are most likely one-time corrections and not the new normal to see $13 million in growth or more every year. In fact, we probably, roughly estimate it to be half that amount after '22, '23. General fund fund balance percentage, I am not going to dwell on this, because this is just referencing what Susan will talk about in, in terms of fund balance, and it gets to Claudia's point about backup plans and how we're going to use fund balance and how we're using fund balance. Fund balance as a percentage, the way we calculate it, has grown significantly. The next slide shows how we're using that. In response to our fund balance, our savings account growing, we're using some of that fund balance. I say this directly to Commissioner Carter, who has asked a number of times, well, can't we spend some of that fund balance? Can't we put it in play? If you'll notice, from 2021 to 2022, '23, you're looking at an increase from 17 million to 28 million. We are putting some of that fund balance into play. And you saw Claudia just exhale.
What did I miss?
I'm sorry.
We, we are stre, the, the, the larger point that Claudia's making is we are stretched pretty thin in aggressively in, in budgeting fund balance as a revenue source. We don't perpetually have $28 million a year in fund balance. We try to, to budget as a revenue source. More importantly, I don't have that growth of $5 million a year from '23 to '28. I'm not going to go from '28 to '32 in '23, '24. We hope we'll make up most of this. It's very possible we could spend some fund balance down, which is part of what we want to do, because we have a policy that says 35% and 16% for unassigned. We want to get close to that number. But once we do get to that number, I'm not going to have $28 million of fund balance as a revenue source. Again, an extraordinary year in revenue abundance, but we've already spent those dollars. I'm just trying to get you prepped for '23, '24. I'm not even allowing you to enjoy '22, '23. Sorry about that. Twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty, twenty-three budget outlook. These are the key areas of expenditures. The total general fund budget increases 45 million, but these are the key areas that we wanted to talk about that, that are of major importance to the manager. Employee compensation increases, this is the COLA, the pay-for-performance, and EMS, and sheriff-related changes, plus just natural changes from last year's COLA and pay-for-performance that we have to have pay a full year on. There's additional funding support recommended for DPS of 9.88 million, we'll just say roughly $10 million. Employee health insurance increases of 4.0, almost $4 million. New human capital, these are the 36-plus positions in the general fund, is costing the general fund 2.2 million. Economic development incentives are fantastic. We're bringing in new businesses, but we're making agreements with some of these new businesses, and that's a delta cost, an additional cost to, of $987,000. I think our total payout budget in economic incentives for '22, '23 is well over 3 million, 3.3 million, something in that range. And then our vehicle replacement costs have increased $855,000. That adds up to $30.2 million worth of expenditure increases just on these issues before we get to departmental requests for a whole host of other issues. As it relates to benefits costs, we, yes, ma'am?
Go back to that slide, because I, I, what I don't understand is the vehicle replacement schedule, because we have a whole lot of money in the budget for vehicles. Just for the sheriff's department alone, it's $1.7 million. So I don't understand where that number is coming from.
These are delta numbers. This is the increase in the amount that we budgeted for vehicles last year to this year. What I focus on and what I'm hoping to help you all get to understand is, let's say we spend on average $2 million a year for vehicle replacement, we went to $2.8 million this year. So it's the $800,000 more that we're spending. The last couple of years, we slowed down on vehicle replacements for ambulances and sheriff vehicles largely, and, and other departmental vehicles, public health, general services, because we were worried about our revenue collections related to COVID and things of that nature. So we got a little bit behind. We're replacing more vehicles this year than we normally do to catch back up to our schedule, and that extra vehicles that we're buying in hybrids and things is costing us, on top of what we normally spend, two to $3 million, David, I don't know the exact number, we're spending an additional 855,000.
Okay, I want to put a pin in that, because I'm definitely going to want to revisit that later on in our discussions.
Really quick, if, because I think people who might be watching, for anybody who was looking at this, every number up there is a delta change number. Every single solitary, it's not just that one, every single number. So school board gets what, 174, that nine point is in addition to last year. Health insurance at 4.36, we pay more than that in insurance, that's in addition. So for everybody, every single number that you're seeing up there is a delta change. It's in addition to what it has been in the past. So I don't want people to just get locked into one, that's every number up there is that number.
Thank you, Commissioner Burns. And I will say for the public, what we are, what's in, the way the budget office looks at it, they'll say we have a $500 million budget, and it goes up to $550 million. It's that difference between those two numbers is where the interest lies. A lot of our budget is just paying for the existing employees, is paying for existing benefits costs that's well over $30 million. It's paying, I'm not talking about building things from zero up to 30 million, I'm talking about going from 30 million to 34 million. It's kind of like when you get a raise of $5,000, you don't talk about spending your whole salary, you talk about what are you going to do with that raise? That's what all these numbers are. Thank you, Commissioner Burns.
Sometimes.
Sometimes. If you're lucky enough to get a raise.
Yeah. I will make one other quick comment, and I think Keith did, about the vehicle replacement schedule. The opportunity cost of us sort of kicking the can on the vehicles is showing up. If you try to buy a car right now, it's hard to find one because of inventory issues, supply chain issues are making prices extremely high. So I believe Keith mentioned how we're buying the ambulances now that will be delivered maybe a year or 18 months from now. That's because of supply chain. So we're hoping going forward, we can have more consistency with our buying, but this particular year, we're glad we can do some catch-up, but we're hoping some normalcy would come in the automobile industry with pricing, because right now, we're playing a lot more than we would for vehicles than in the past.
Claudia, as far as the vehicle replacement schedule, has it been two years since that, that the sheriff has relinquished some of the funds for vehicles? I remember one year was when Ellen Ruckel was still here, that we reduced the number of vehicles that, do you remember what I'm talking about?
Yes, ma'am.
So if we didn't, so we're paying catch-up from that year?
We're paying catch-up from that year for the sheriff's department as well as some others. And, and we can get you that detail, but I, I wanted to make that note, because you get to a point where the vehicle is outlived its usefulness, and the cost benefit of repairs just does not make sense. And so-
Just remember that we didn't budget for the number of vehicles that was requested-
Yes, ma'am.
It's been, it's been two years, Jerharton, that we've reduced, not only sheriff, but a few other departments. And as we're all pointing out, one of the complications is when you, vehicles are one of those sort of fixed costs. When you, when you don't buy them one year, it usually ends up having to make up for it in the future, and that's a little bit of what we're seeing this year. In an ideal budget world, in department world, you take vehicle purchases out of the decision process, because it's a fixed cost of doing business. But when you don't, and this is when you have to make up a little bit. Luckily, our vehicle expenses are not as large as some of the more public safety-heavy governments, where you really are buying fire trucks and multiple police cars.
Well, I didn't mean to open a can of worms. I said this is something I'd like to discuss when we get later today, but I, I do think, I mean, for me personally, I, my priority is to invest in people right now, considering all the challenges that we have going on with, throughout the county and through the schools. So I, I will look forward to talking about that more later.
I do know, and we won't dwell on it, but we have some money budgeted in general services to do a pilot study on a vehicle, group of vehicles, that rather than individual departments, not really, we're not talking about sheriff and ambulances, but other departments, that we have a group of vehicles that people can sort of use as needed, rather than individual department owning vehicles and them sitting there for long periods of time. So to, to that end, we are trying to limit the growth in cost of vehicles. We're also looking at and buying a significant number of hybrid vehicles, and the renewable energy plant, I'm sure will have some increased vehicle cost related as we move to even more energy-efficient and carbon-neutral, whatever term you want to use, vehicles come, moving towards the future.
Keith, one more note of clarification on this slide, and this does not represent every increase.
No, ma'am.
Right, these were just the priority, right.
Correct.
Just wanted to-
Yes, ma'am. Just some key priorities, didn't want to overwhelm the board, that's in the entire budget document and, and other presentations we're going to have throughout the next upcoming weeks or months, month. General fund historical benefits, these are largely our health insurance costs and some dental and vision, but let's just say it's, it's health insurance cost. This is the same sort of slide. The orange line is the actual benefits cost we have paid out, the green line is the budgeting num, budgeted number, and the blue and the green columns are the delta from the previous year. So the increase in cost, health insurance cost from one year to the next. And what we really want to focus on is '21, '22, you see the cost is estimated to be, we're not quite done with the fiscal year, close to $32 million. We budgeted $30 million. In fact, we're probably going to be coming back to the board before the end of June with a budget amendment to ask for an increase in money to pay for those benefits. But with $31 million trended in our, in our trending line, Shannon Wright in our office has done a lot of work on this, she is done and very confident in our estimate of 34.6 million is where we need to be for '22, '23. So budget to budget, 30.3 to 34.6 is a 3.4 million roughly increase in health insurance costs, or 4 million, excuse me, 4.3 million. Does that make sense to everyone? That's a significant increase this year, but it's a number that has grown, it's significant every year. We are now spending $35 million a year in benefits cost for employees. 10% a year in health insurance cost isn't unheard of, that's three and a half million minimum expenditure cost. We try to keep it lower than that, but just know that is a real expenditure cost. Historical FTE trending, only show this real quick to show you part of the reason we're going to have compensation issues we're talking about. This is, if you look at the, the red line is the actual FTEs for the county, year after year, where we are. The green line is what's requested from departments, and that purple or blue line is what's being recommended by the manager. The key to note here is right now in '21, '22, we're at 2,204 total positions in the county. Departments asked for 100 more positions, 2,303. The manager's recommending roughly 36 more additional positions. What I want you to see is the upward slope, how that slope is increasing. We are averaging 30 to 40, between 30 and 40 new positions a year for the last three or four years. We've been able to pay for the salary cost, but every time you add 200 new- We've been able to pay for the salary cost, but every time you add 200 new positions, they got to have a place to sit, which is eventually puts pressure on the need to build new buildings or to supply them with vehicles or to supply them with operating costs or to pay for their health insurance, to pay for their salary increases. People are expensive too. So as you add positions, the cost of maintaining those same positions in 23, 24 becomes even more expensive. Just wanted to point that out. Any questions about this graph?
I always had the comment that we've been growing in the same period. So there are more pressures for the organization to deliver more service. And so for those that didn't have the benefit of that conversation last week, looking at where we've grown almost 20% in the last decade, projected to grow another 40% in 30 years. So those pressures are real and just wanted to make sure that comment is also added.
So we look at 1920 to 2023.
150 positions.
We've grown.
If you approve the 36 that the manager is recommending, you will, you will have grown from actual 2091 to the blue line of 2,240. That's 150 new positions in three years.
Now, are they new positions or are they?
Mostly new positions. New positions and/or grant positions, but largely new full-time county positions. Additional sheriff folks, additional folks in DSS.
This is, this is a chart talking about authorized strength. So this doesn't talk about hiring, people leaving and hiring within the same position. This is increasing the authorized strength count of the government in all, is what this is representing.
At some point, I think it would be interesting to know what our departments felt like we needed to keep up with the growth in the county as far as service provision goes and, you know, what's not being recommended to fill, just so we would sort of have that as context. And so we would be thinking about it for the future. You know, like we may need these in the future. Our departments are saying we need it, need it now. We don't feel like we can quite, you know, we don't have the revenue to do it all now. But just going forward, what might we need to be keeping in mind that we might need?
We're, we're happy to compile a list. I think you asked that, a close version of this question in your meeting with the manager, and we've compiled some of the issues of things that weren't funded, but we can easily get a sort of list of all the positions that were asked for by departments.
Yeah, it's kind of like what with Durham Tech right now, we're looking at, and even with DPS, the projection of skills sets that is going to be needed in the next 10 years and, and employment. It's like what, what is the data showing that's projected in the next 10 years?
Well, that's a good question, and I think the next slide is going to help you understand. Part of the reason that we didn't fund 100 positions outside of the cost alone is that the vacancy rate for existing positions has more than doubled in two years.
Keith, Commissioner Alon, I had a question.
Ma'am? Oh, I'm sorry.
This was my question.
I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
No, no, I was just going to ask for if there was a table, I should have looked ahead, that showed us the vacancies for the county and like trending.
Yes, ma'am. And basically, the trend you want to see here is we were averaging 10 or 11%, 12% vacancies. We're at now 20%. That's 100% increase in the vacancy. Instead of having 200 vacant positions, we're now at 400 vacant positions. It's, we're struggling, even if we create a new position, we're struggling to fill them. We created 10 new public school health nurses for this year that we have yet to fill because we can't find the folks to fill them. We have compensation issues with EMS, paramedics and technicians, struggling over in the sheriff's department for detention officers and LEO officers, struggling in DSS. DSS has a world of deeds and requests for positions. They have 30, 40, 50 vacancies in their own department. It's hard to tie up money for new positions when you can't even fill, you're struggling to fill the existing positions that you have. These are some of the hard decisions the managers had to make.
And I'll reiterate with that one, Dr. Sewell's done a great job of pushing and allowing the departments and especially DSS, who's at, who has needs to reallocate within their existing vacancies. So we're not tying up dollars to create 30 more vacancies that we nearly know we aren't going to be able to fill due to the hiring crunch, the great retirement, all of those cliche words. But that's why it, the, the need versus what we're funding sometimes is a little bit different because of the nature of making sure we, we acknowledge that we're not full staffed at this point.
We are 15 minutes behind. I will answer all your questions, just wanted to note that.
Well, related to that, and again, this is something I'd like to, us to get more information about, is I, I would like to understand more about the process and we're, you know, just, we don't have enough money to fund everything that needs to be funded and our budget is really not sustainable. So are we, have we asked departments to justify basically all of their positions? And are we looking at all of these vacancies and saying, well, we need these new positions, but can we just, again, what you said, instead of creating new positions, can we just look at the vacancies to do that? So those are, those are some of my questions.
And that was the exact conversation that we held with departments. And I will say that half of the FTEs that are requested in the recommended budget are for internal departments. And, you know, if you go back to the slide where we've been adding FTEs over the, you know, recent years, but very few of them were for internal departments. And as you add FTEs to the public facing departments, you have to have FTEs for the internal departments to support the work of those additional FTEs. And so we had not done that in the past, and so we were, we made that a priority this year.
You can read that in the manager's message. Internal service departments, IS and T, general services, finance, HR, those departments were a focus for a significant FTE increases per what the manager just said. In previous years, that growth has largely been public health, public safety, DSS related positions and where the increase, but as you add positions there, you got to turn around and have internal service support for those positions and buildings. Thank you, Dr. Sewell.
So thank you, Keith, for letting, reminding us that we've gone 15 minutes over allocation of time on this item. So I guess I need to get back on my job and pay attention to the time here.
I'm going to move through this real quick. DPS funding, DPS funding is recommended to increase 9.88 million dollars. To Commissioner Burns's point, the entire funding for Durham Public Schools, annual local support is now 176 million dollars recommended. That's a per pupil funding increase of 359 to 4,333 per student. It's 2 million dollars under what DPS requested. It's still a six, almost 6% increase in their total budget. There's an additional 48 million dollars that the county provides for what we consider school-related issues, including SRO, school resource officers out of the sheriff's department, public health programs and public school nurses, nonprofit support and largely DPS debt-related service on buildings and capital projects using previous geo-bonds issued or COPs funding. So there's another 48 million on top of the 176 million that we give directly to DPS. It's just another way of looking at that same information since we're running a little bit behind them, I'll skip right past this slide. Durham Public Schools funding has increased. This is the same sort of slide we've shown multiple times. The orange line is the requested budget from DPS. The blue line is what we have funded annually and the amount of increased delta amount is the columns, the blue columns and the green column for each of those years. The key thing to point out here, and we pointed this out at the joint meeting, is look at four years from 1920 to 22, 23 versus the four years before. Annual increases in DPS funding by the county have increased significantly, that delta number that matters to me. General fund total budget, 550 million dollars, almost 9% increase from the original current year's budget, original budget of 504 million, that's a 45 million dollar increase. Remember, we highlighted 30 million dollars of those increases in that bulleted list. All funds, total funds, general fund, special revenue funds are where our fire districts are at and our RTP special district. Our debt service fund is where we pay our 60 some odd, 70 some odd million dollars in debt-related service, annual-related service. And then our enterprise funds, our sewer utility fund and our stormwater fund. Total budget is 794 million dollars. That's an 8% increase. We're getting perilously close to a billion dollars before too long budget. Just wanted you to note that. Summary, we got a hot, hot 21, 22 local economy, but will it cool in 22, 23? Supply chain issues, who knows what COVID may or may not do. Inflation will have an effect. We just don't know the answers to that, so we've had some fairly conservative revenue estimates, even though it's been a fantastic revenue growth year. We're always, always, for Claudia's sake and Susan's sake, try to maintain a solid fiscal condition. We continue to maintain a strong AAA bond rating. We're looking at significant revenue growth, outstanding revenue growth, maybe once-in-a-lifetime revenue growth for this year, largely due to current year growth we're seeing. We are also seeing continued growth in county services related to things like public health as well as experiencing economic realities that are putting stress on a whole host of departments and departmental requests. And then there's the looming issue and how we distribute ARPA funding. And with that, I just wanted to give a quick overview. There's a lot of numbers on this slide. This is a five-year projection. I've shown you all this before, maybe hard to see on your small monitors, maybe we're turning around and trying to look at it on this, on the screen behind you. The main issue to show you here is that as we look out in our potential expenditure growth areas in 23, 24 and the next four years after that, so basically looking out five years, I'm looking at delta growth in expenditures of 27, 28 million, 30 million, 29, let's just say average growth of 30-plus million dollars a year in expenditures without you all having to even make a decision. This is the natural growth in salaries, natural average growth in positions, cost increases of health insurance. Well, we got to offset that natural growth in expenditures with natural growth in revenues. The problem is the natural growth in our revenues looking out in the future are lower than the natural growth expenditure cost. These are estimates. Magically, every year, we find a way to fine tune this and come into balance. The issue is getting back to the very first thing I said. This was an extraordinary year in revenue growth and you filled up all of that revenue growth instantaneously with any number of expenditure cost increases. Next year, you're going to have less revenue growth, but what are you going to have more of? More expenditure needs. Every choice you make now also is going to have an effect and it's going to carry a burden of cost in 23, 24, 24, 25. It's not a problem, just have to be judicious in understanding what you choose to fund now will have ramifications in future years. I will stop there. I actually will not stop there. With a budget work session the rest of the day today, May the 19th, we will talk about the capital financing plan and how that looks with the CIP. We will have DPS and DTCC come and speak with you on the 19th. We'll have a public hearing on May the 23rd. Then we'll have a little bit of break and we will start with departmental reviews of specific departments on June 2nd, 6th and 8th, if needed, with final budget approval hopefully on June the 13th. And with that, I think I'm done.
All right. Thank you, Keith. So the next one is fund balance update.
So we'll have Susan, Tzai is going to come and give us an update on designated and undesignedated reserves and provide some information on some year-end projections and how that impacts our liquidity or cash on hand.
As Susan is coming forth, I just want to thank her and her team who worked tirelessly to keep us moving. I can't help but always reflect back on our past two years and all that we've been through and just grateful for their hard work.
It, it was attached to the.
It's in Legislaw, all the presentations.
I saw that, uh huh.
There are a couple of extra resources as well. One is the presentation we did with the board in February about fund balance. We had some recommendations about policy changes. We'll come back to that at another meeting. And then it's a companion document that aligns with this slide deck.
Can you catch your mic on? Is it on?
My apologies. So what we've included for time purposes is two attachments, is the summary write-up of the presentation that we're about to walk through. And then the second part is where we came to in February regarding perhaps revising our fund balance policy to further strengthen it as well, but in the meantime to also look at enhancing it from a, not just from an efficiency standpoint, but we'll talk about that right there at the end. So for handout highlights, you know, of course, we've maintained our comprehensive financial policies. You know, we do have a financial policy, it was approved. I think the last time it was updated was about five years ago. Important part of the policies is maintaining achievement of appropriate levels of general fund, fund balance. Also very important in our fund balance is maintaining cash flow liquidity. If you recall, when we went through cyber and COVID, we were very fortunate with our liquidity level of our fund balance to be able to purchase things that we couldn't wait for emergency funding and whatnot. Our current policy, there's two primary parts. The first part is retention of a 35% of general fund expenditures as a total to our available for appropriation. The second part is 16% of unassigned, which is included in 35%, not in addition to. And our current fund balance policy has continued to meet the criteria rating metrics for the rating agencies as well as maintain a sufficient liquidity level for the county. And that has helped us with maintaining our AAA rating. The unassigned fund balance represents resources that have not yet been dedicated, not to balance next year's budget, not committed for OPEB or Article 46, those types of things. So that part is what you see literally that has not been set aside or labeled to be utilized for anything at that point in time. Some of your committed examples, your primary one is your OPEB committed. If you recall, with the implementation of certain GASPes, GASPes 67, 73, those types of GASPes, the reporting requirements became much more stringent to make sure that governmental entities were setting aside appropriate funding to be able to fund our future benefits once our employees reach retirement age and decide to do so. Included in that, at that point was a recommendation to have irrevocable trust. And once you put monies in an irrevocable trust, you can't utilize those funds for any other purpose. Governmental entities have never been able to not find their OPEB benefits. That's just a given. So some entities, few participate in an irrevocable trust, some created their own, some decided to do their own thing. What Durham County did with the recommendation of the previous CFO and also mine as a deputy at that point in time, is to have a committed fund balance. So with that, that shows that we are trying to set funding aside should something happen that we would need to utilize that funding to help fund our OPEB benefits. However, because it is committed, if something happens like, for instance, an emergency situation where we have to access certain funding, you know, if that's the case, then you do have that option. But if, unless it's something that's considered an emergency situation, then it's in the county's best interest not to utilize it, except for OPEB. Debt service committed represents your resources available for your future debt payments. Risk management is what we set aside. We have an actuarial study done every year that tells us what we need to set aside in case that there's a catastrophic event. We have a formula in our fund balance policy that the board approved when they approved that policy to set what's committed aside. And then we have other smaller amounts of committed like you, your LEO, because we don't participate in an irrevocable trust for that as well. The county never has, but we've always funded it and we've always maintained a sufficient level set aside for any, any additional costs that. for any additional costs that may occur. There's also education, which is your Article forty-six, that are unspent funds. And then, of course, self-insurance and reappraisal reserve, which is what we set aside to meet statutory requirements for your reappraisal funding. And then you have your restricted fund balance. The biggest portion of your restricted fund balance is what we call your stabilization by state statute. And that's a formal calculation per general statutes that sets aside a funding of monies that have not come in at that point in time. You cannot appropriate funding you have not yet received. It also includes restricted funding. And the stabilization by statute also includes your encumbered amount. If you've committed everything and it's going to roll forward to the next fiscal year, like anytime you commit for a purchase of goods or a contract for services, then there's a pre-audit to set the funds aside to make sure that you're protecting the county, that it will not overextend itself. It will not overcommit itself. And then the other restricted is your unspent federal and state awards, grant awards that are restricted for the purpose in which you receive the funding. So while that's available to be used, it can only be used for that purpose. Then our assigned fund balance with Durham County, you can assign funds at a fund balance level for certain purposes that you deem appropriate. However, the county has never assigned anything other than what you've set aside to balance the next year's budget. So when you look at that number in your financials and you see that number, that's what you've set aside as of June thirtieth for the next fiscal year to balance that budget. And then you have your unassigned. And then, of course, is the importance of continuing our fund balance policies. That's been a consistent part of the financial management of Durham County. And that's been something that we've been very proud of, and that's one reason Durham County is able to maintain our AAA rating. So the continuation of these policies is to the benefit of the county. Also included in why that happens is what I mentioned earlier, providing adequate cash flow resources that may be needed to meet future needs, as well as aligning with collaboration of revenues that are budgeted to pay those expenditures. And then as a resource to meet future unanticipated needs, because we never know what the future might hold up. We didn't predict cyber. We didn't predict COVID. And then we talk about the fund balance and the fluidity of the fund balance. And also, that second bullet is very important. Fund balance should never be used for ordinary operating cost, which is your reoccurring operating expenditures. One-time use is the proper and appropriate use of fund balance. And our policy is just, you know, to reiterate, is consistent with the highest credit ratings. And then just to reiterate, and we do this every year, is to make, to make sure that the county is aware that we are not a true AAA. So if you look at every metric, and we're calculated against every metric, then we don't meet that AAA rating. However, they take other circumstances into account, like for instance, our management. So when you hear the term management AAA, that's us. That's what gets us to the next level, because we do manage toward our policies. We have efficient and effective policies. So this slide is something that Keith touched on, which is the percentage of fund balance. You can see it from FY seventeen to FY projected for FY twenty-two. So you can see the total calculation projected for FY twenty-two is thirty-nine point oh eight percent. And then the unassigned is projected at nineteen point four eight percent. And you've got to remember, this calculation is going to be different at any given point in time that you calculate it, because everything changes. Your denominator may change, the numerator changes. So it's always as of a certain point in time. So this projection is as of a point in time estimated as of June thirtieth for 2022. So what we've done here is we've calculated, well, we're showing you what was actual for FY twenty-one, per the FY twenty-one act for. And then we're showing what we're projecting after data analysis at looking at what we've seen in the general ledger for the general fund at act for level. So we're looking at a projected fund balance of two-hundred-and-sixty-nine point six million. So based on what we've seen, we're looking at a sixteen point five million dollar growth, dollar-wise. So you're looking at, I'm assuming, no significant change in non-spendable or restricted. So that's why you see nothing there, because it wouldn't even be significant to our knowledge. Because to our knowledge, the departments are going to receive their significant revenues in hand prior to June thirtieth. And so, and so anything that comes in after June thirtieth, we're not looking at would be something that would be material. And we're not aware of any department who is expecting to see something after June thirtieth that they normally would see prior to. And then you're looking at your committed. And so we're looking at an assumption of a slight growth. That could be based on the actuarial study for risk management. It can be based on unspent funding for Article forty-six, anything that's in those calculations in our fund balance policy. Assigned for subsequent years, that's the increase that Keith referred to. And unassigned, you can see, we're looking at a possible ten point six million dollar growth. So when you look at the percentages, you see that they went down, even though you're looking at a projected dollar growth. And that's all in the change of how the formula, you've got a much larger denominator. So we projected to spend more. We planned to spend more. And of course, we did, but of course, you can, as Keith talked about, the vacant FTEs. So you've got a large number of lab salaries currently. Operating seemed to trend the way we had planned. Revenues, they seem to, even though we've talked about how well we did with, or are doing with tax collections and sales tax collections, intergovernmental, we've seen some trends that we've had to question to find out why. We're not sure that they're not trending as high as we would like in some areas. So when you look at all the categories and you mix them and you add them together, between licenses and permits, investments, intergovernmental, when you average all that out, we're looking at slightly over a hundred percent of actual revenues to budget. We're also looking at, and I can, I'll show you the assumptions later, at approximately ninety-five percent of your total expenditure budget. And I'll show you what that actually was as of FY twenty-one to show the comparison. So we also looked at projecting for FY twenty-three based on the manager's recommended budget at act for level. So you can see that we're looking at a projection of a use of some of the fund balance. This is a conservative estimate. Since we, since we came out of the recession, we've been very fortunate to collect over a hundred percent of budgeted revenues. So this estimate assumes a hundred percent. So you can look at it as it's aggressive from one standpoint. And then you're looking at an increase to ninety-six percent of expenditures, because I'm sure you're aware, you know, as Keith stated, we're planning to spend more. And then you're looking at your ARPA draft, which has at the, at the end of that, also some assumptions of planned spending of fund balance. And then we're looking at a slight growth again for committed. Subsequent years, I assumed, just to make an assumption to see what the picture would look like, that we would assume a growth of appropriated fund balance at the same level. So you can see if that were to hold true, and there again, it's based on the assumptions, and you're looking at unassigned going down of about nine point nine million. And there again, a slight decrease in your percentages. And then looking out at FY twenty-four, the assumption was, okay, what if we assume that we're going to increase our revenues and our expenditures by the same level that we have this past year and what we're recommending for the current year? Then if that's the case, plus I'm sure you're aware that, once you've utilized fund balance, the plan is to see, okay, how can you either maintain that level or how can you recoup that level unless you're using it for one time? So we're looking at, there again, in FY twenty-four with that estimated budget, we're making an assumption of a hundred percent of the budget revenues if it were approved at that level, and maintaining a ninety-six percent rate, because to do a hundred percent of your expenditure rate would assume that you're going to fill every position. You're going to work three-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year. Your benefits are going to maintain constant, so which is not technically realistic. So when you look at that, and then you want to maintain slight increase with committed. Restricted, you see a slight increase for each projection, and that's because assuming there may be an increase in your stabilization by state statute primarily. And then for subsequent years, maintain the same level of, assuming a projected same level of appropriated fund balance, then you're looking at unassigned of an estimated ninety-eight point three, with once again, the percentage is slightly going down. And then the unassigned being a decrease of an estimated four point seven. There again, this is all assumption, a what-if scenario. Yes, ma'am?
Before you leave that page, would you remind us again in C, where it's, that first block is empty, unfavorable. There's zero in it.
For column C, for the non-spendable and the restricted? Okay, because I'm assuming no significant change. Anything would be immaterial. Non-spendable for Durham County is your inventories, as well as your prepaid expenditures. I don't see any growth in that. Restricted would be assuming that we're going to maintain the same level of stabilization by state statute and that the departments will spend the same level of their restricted grant and federal and state programming, with no significant increase in what they're going to hold and be able to restrict at year-end for not being able to spend it.
So Susan, when I look at this, are you trying in these projections to, are you, is this basically trying to get us down to the percentages that we have committed to? Do you see this as a way to get us back down to the thirty-five percent and the sixteen percent?
Yes.
Okay.
Making an assumption that we're going to spend at a level that we had said we would spend to get us back to where we need to spend the money appropriately in the county's best interest.
Okay.
And what we provided back in 2019, before cyber and before COVID, was showing you how many, the operating cost per day for the general fund. So this is what the unassigned fund balance was in FY twenty-one as of June thirtieth, a hundred and two point two million. The salaries and benefits that were in your general ledger for that fiscal year for the general fund at act for level was about one, one-hundred-and-seventy-five point nine million. Operating was three-hundred-and-sixty point five. So the total operating was five thirty-six point four. So you divide that by three-hundred-and-sixty-five days, you were looking at a cost per day of not quite one point five million. So if you divide that cost per day into your unassigned, then at that point in time, you were looking at sixty-nine point five, five days to operate should something happen that would be devastating to the county. And so this is just a screen to show you some of the assumptions that were made. So for twenty-two, I assumed ninety-five percent of budgeted expenditures at this point in time, based on what we've seen for actuals compared to budget to date. FY twenty-one, that number was ninety point five nine. So that's a four point four one percent increase of your expenditure budget. The revenues, as I mentioned earlier, a hundred point four two percent. FY, that's a typo, my apologies, was a hundred and three point four eight percent. And that's because not many places feel comfortable enough to estimate at least a hundred percent. And like I said, based on the other categories, this is the average of those categories. And then assuming that we're going to transfer within the fund as well as out of the fund, a hundred percent of what is budgeted. And typically, we do, because the major transfers are to debt service. Major transfers in are special revenue, community health trust. Twenty-three, I'm assuming an increase to ninety-six percent. That could go up if we're fortunate enough for the incentives that HR is recommending to bring on some needed staff. A hundred percent of budgeted revenues. And there again, a hundred percent of transfers in and out. Twenty-three, twenty-four, making that same assumption. Ninety-six percent of expenditures, a hundred percent of revenues and transfers in and out.
Questions?
Yes, ma'am.
I have another question related to the days of operating expenses that, do we have a policy on that? How many days that we're supposed to have? And do we include the schools in that? Because, you know, we've always said to DPS that you don't need to have a big fund balance, because if you need money, you can come to us. So do we, how do we factor DPS into that?
Schools, the operating was included in the operating expenses that you saw in the calculation. Capital is not included, just like capital for any other internal department. But the, the large number that we provide for operating was included in that number.
Do we have a policy related to how many days, or where does that come from?
Susan can weigh in on that. You know, we, think about your own personal finances. If something were to happen, a rule of thumb is often three months and then six months. But the industry and how the rating agencies look at it is an entity's alignment with their policy. And Susan can add a little bit more.
So there's no set number of days specific to apply to every entity. Every entity, it depends on their economy, their situation, their financials, their financial stability. What it does, you need to include it in your assessment and in the thought process of how you come up with your policy as far as your fund balance policy, to make sure that, at the end of the day, what we have available for cash flow and liquidity is sufficient. So those number of days go into play there, as well as to making sure that what we have on hand meets the metrics for the rating agencies. As Keith stated, the interest rates are going up for investments, which means the interest rates for debt is going up as well. You've got the bond referendum coming and those types of things. So it's very important for Durham County that we maintain that AAA. And so as we, you know, one of the handouts that we provided is the fund balance update that we came in February, where we're looking at revising the fund balance policy to make it even more strength-worthy, including what we just talked about as relates to cash flow and liquidity, number of days. But what we do bring back to you will be just as financially sound as what we currently have. But we're hoping that it will be even more efficient. It will concentrate primarily on unassigned, which is what everybody's trending to versus the total as we've related in the past. But it also, before we bring anything to you, we will make sure that it meets vetting with the metrics for the rating agencies, as well as sufficient cash flow liquidity, to make sure that no matter how we move forward, that we move forward in the best interest of Durham County.
So if we, you know, we're going into tornado season, and prayerfully, nothing happens in Durham County, but should anything happen, do we know how long it takes the Fed to give us money?
Yes, and just FYI related to that, I'm glad you asked. And looking at and getting an update from staff regarding FEMA filing. We filed not quite eight million to date, and we have about that much that we're still trying to prepare to file, which is in process. That takes, it's a tedious process, because as you know, FEMA is still supporting documentation and whatnot. It's not all electronic. So, and then going back and forth with departments, working with them to make sure we have everything we need to file sufficiently for every dollar. So, and no, we haven't yet to receive any of the FEMA reimbursement.
We don't even have a timeline as to when they will reimburse us at all.
The last update I received from staff was there's no. And I think everyone is in the same situation. And also, we also have not received the funding for the cyber attack that we have filed. So we're anticipating the receipt there. Well, it lasted for quite some time. So it didn't take just, you know, about six weeks. It didn't take just that long to put the networks back. But then we had to put in the manual data. And then we had to update the system, and then we had to true up the payrolls. And then there was the taxes, and then there was the benefits. It was, it was a long, drawn-out process.
It was about, I guess we just finished really capturing all the costs associated with that?
And then working with a third party, trying to make sure that we had everything that we needed to support what we were filing. It was very important. What we're looking to get back, just FYI. But there again, we were very fortunate that we had the liquidity to take care of our citizens.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Nita?
I mean, I really want to thank you, Susan, and all of your staff for keeping us in such a sound financial position. And I definitely feel grateful to live in a county that has such a solid managed AAA bond rating. I also want to keep it that way, you know, and really respect our policy, the sixteen percent for unassigned and the thirty-five percent for, did I get that wrong? Yeah.
That's correct.
Right. And so, you know, I'm committed to that, one hundred percent. I also think with all the needs that we know that we have and inadequate amount of resources, that we don't want to keep any more in fund balance.
Absolutely. And that's one of the reasons that we're looking at making sure that we revise the policy, but also trying to come back to you to utilize funding to make sure that we don't have an excess, but to utilize it in the appropriate manner.
Right.
And can I weigh in quickly on this? In February, as Susan said, we presented a draft policy, and we'll come back in June to talk about it again, get some board agreement. When we presented to you the ARPA fund framework, at the end of that document was a linkage actually back to the policy revision, in that in 2021, we had close to twenty-two million dollars?
Yes.
Okay, my memory works most times, but I may have been wrong. We had about twenty-two million. That was above the amount that's required at the sixteen percent. We presented in that ARPA framework document, some potential strategies for the board to consider supporting. Those aligned with your strategic plan, they sort of synced up with the ARPA framework in that some, there were more priority areas than there are ARPA dollars, as well as other dollars that could benefit from some one-time investments. So we, those two will connect. We're hoping to have that follow-up conversation, because there are many pressing needs, and the board has expressed the desire to move forward strategically in some key areas.
Yes, and I really, really appreciate the leadership from the county on that. And one other thing I'm wondering is, just to be sure I understand this, if we had less, if we assign, if we put, if we committed less of our unassigned fund balance than we currently have committed into those different categories like OPEB and debt service, then we would have even more money in unassigned fund balance. Is that correct?
If you unappropriate and you're committed, that's correct.
Like, and that's, and that's a decision that we make based on various, you know, factors, formulas, and financial guiding principles, to be sure we're, you know, getting the right amount in those different funds. But if we needed to spend that money, we actually could if we had not committed it. Is that, is that right?
The board has the authority to commit funding for a purpose, and they also have the authority to uncommit. So yes, so that's what I was saying earlier. So we've set money aside, but should something happen to where we're in, you know, I hope doesn't happen, like another disaster, and you need emergency funding, yes, you certainly can do that.
Like if we needed more than sixty-nine point five, five days of funding because of some terrible emergency, then we could draw also from the committed fund balances.
That's correct.
Thank you.
You cannot for what's in the stabilization by state statute, and what's in your restricted for unspent federal state awards and your grants.
And we would have to make sure that, for instance, if it's debt service, we purposely grown our debt service reserves to help soften the impact of tax increases. So we've been raising, we raise the dollars when we issue bond referendums, and those dollars grow, et cetera.
Yes, and so staff would not recommend.
So that would be an area that we could, however, there would be an implication in that.
Yes.
We would need to determine, well, how do we decrease future commitments? So if we've not obligated the county for debt for particular projects, we would need to recalibrate. That would be an area that we would just watch carefully.
And per our fund balance policy, it does talk, speak to how we fund our OPEB. And we do not fund it up past a certain level of our total fund balance, because we would not want that number to become top-heavy, so to speak, compared to the other remaining fund balance that would be available. So there is a limit based on our policy. Last year, we did not put the full amount in, up to the twenty-five percent, because we used our judgment that we thought that we would need it for other purposes. So, but we did put some in to satisfy our policy, but it is up to twenty-five percent of our total fund balance that it cannot and should not exceed. And that was one of the things that we were able to receive feedback from, from the rating agencies several years ago.
Thank you, guys.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I mean, I, from what I remember, the policies that you had possibly brought forward before, I would just say that one of my concerns when we did look at those was that, we, right now, we actually get to vote on very little of the budget. I mean, out of, out of an eight billion dollar budget, we're, we're making choices about very little money. Most of it is already hardwired to things. And, you know, we're supposed to be the elected representatives of people. And so we're, you know, the more that we say this has to go to this, and this is hardwired to this, the less discretion that we have as elected officials to be able to respond to needs in the community. So I, I just, I'm just going to throw that out there, that I was, those were concerns that I personally had when I saw some of the suggestions for a proposed change to policies. I want to be really careful, because we hardly get to make decisions about very little money.
Exactly.
Very little. And so I really, I'm personally wary of, I think you have done a great job of protecting us and putting these policies in place, but I also want to be wary, I'm wary of going overboard with that, considering all the needs that we do have in our community.
Thank you. And that's why we're looking at revisiting our fund balance policy and what we can do to make it even more efficient, while still maintaining, like I said, the calculations to meet the metrics for the AAA, as well as liquidity needs. Those are the top two. Yes, ma'am.
Mine is really quick, because we're over time. I appreciate everything my colleagues have said. I appreciate what you said. I respectfully disagree. I think we get to vote on everything. I don't think, you know, I'm not in leadership meetings, so I don't get to see what every penny gets. I get it on Thursday, which to me is more than ample time, right, for me. Thursday, Friday, Saturday, I can look at it, figure out why we're buying, you know, a steam pump here, why we're putting something in the ground there. I do agree that a lot of it is hardwired, because, you know, you got to buy ambulance, the whole, you know, public health is none of us, public safety. There are certain things that, what I, let's call a thing a thing. We have a lot of people in here today, and I do not want them to leave out of here thinking that our staff, and that is the notion that they will leave here with, because it has not been properly explained, that our staff has written these policies in such a way that our hands are tied. Everybody up here has grown, everybody up here was elected, everybody up here can read a budget. There are a lot of things that the community asks me for during the budget cycle and before the budget cycle, and they're in there, because I work with staff to get them in there, I work with my colleagues to get them in there, because there's a process to this thing. So I do respectfully disagree that there's not a lot that we don't, that we don't vote on. We have the same constraints around us that all one of the, one hundred counties have. So when we talk about the health and welfare of the individuals in this community, from Murphy to Manio, that is what every county has to deal with. So that hardwiredness, about ninety-five percent of it, that's what every other county has hardwired in there. I did want to go back for a second, because y'all said it five or six times, but I have seen, none of them were emailed to me, because, you know, folks love to weaponize underprivileged people. It's Durham's favorite thing to do. How can we weaponize underprivileged people? I know, because my parents and myself, we've been weaponized before for political causes that didn't do anything to help us at all. One of the things I really want to make sure that we drive home, we are talking about fund balance, and you all said it about three or four times, it is one-time use. One-time use. I'm gonna say it again for the Father, Son, and Holy Ghost, one-time use. So when we see the public sending emails back and forth, and they're asking for it to be put on something that's reoccurring, it is incumbent upon us as elected officials and professionals to say, hey, I understand that you want this, but let me tell you why it can't come out of this space. That has not happened. That is not just the job of this body. There are two other bodies here. There's a city council, there's a school board. If somebody were to weren't something, it registered D's office, that's an elected official sheriff's, DA's office. So when people come to us and they ask us for these things, and then we get up here and be somewhat performative about, well, let me ask you this, and let me ask you that, we already know the answer to those questions. So let's not do that, because it insults the intelligence of the public, and it's really disrespectful to the hard work you all put in for six months when everybody else turned in their budget requests. So I do want to just reiterate, for anybody who missed what I said, one, we're talking about fund balance. We've used fund balance, the other day, we used some fund balance to extend a pre-K classroom. Am I correct in that? It was fifty, so it's not like we don't use fund balance, but to extend a classroom, that's a one-time use. I'm not extending that classroom every year. We use it for nonprofits. We use it for, the other day, for the affordable housing. We couldn't get as many faucets as we needed to, correct? So we had to use some of fund balance to go out and find faucets. So we do use it, but I'm not buying that same faucet every year. And I just want y'all, I'm being anecdotal, because I really want everybody in Durham to understand, I come from a neighborhood where my parents, they came to these meetings, and they didn't always understand. And elected officials that were sitting up there didn't take the time to do it. So if nobody understands why I'm doing it, I'm saying these things and giving these examples because I care. And I care enough about your issues, your causes, your paycheck, the children that you have to feed, that I don't want you to leave out of here when you have to go back to work, because I know some of y'all got to go back to work. I just want you to know, we hear you, we listen to you, but I'm also not going to lie to you. So that's my two cents. Fund balance is a lot of times for one-time use. And number two, I do feel like we get to make a lot of decisions, but I do look forward to whatever policy handbook you all bring back to us. Thank you.
Any other questions? Susan, if not, Susan, we really appreciate you and your team and all the work that you do. And one of the things that is, will be so great, because we know that citizens can't come and sit and listen to us every day to understand everything that happens within our budget. But come next year, our manager has put forth a proposal for a van that will be out in the community, talking to people and explaining more of what we do, so that there's a more, so that people can really engage with the county. Because it's been, for the last couple of years, it's been really, really difficult for all of us to get here. We've been doing Zoom. But the other thing is Deborah has, Deborah Craig Ray has done a, what do you call, the group that you pull together, Deborah, for community members to participate in learning about county and city? Which one is it?
Neighborhood College.
Neighborhood College is another way for the community engage, and I'm not sure when that's going to start again, but just sharing this so that the community knows that there are different ways for them to engage and understand what's going on with the county. And not only that, but our employees are always more than eager to answer questions for citizens so that they understand what we are having to do with their, especially with their dollars, because these are tax dollars. And as I work over it, I haven't done it in a while, but one of the things that we did at UNC, and being able to address the public administrators, was we talked about the responsibility of staff and then the responsibility of elected officials. And it was always interesting that, you know, we hire experts. We hire experts that understand their job, and then we have to make decisions as elected officials. So we appreciate you, and we appreciate the staff and all the hard work you do.
Thank you.
And we are always here if there's some, if there's more that you need from us. So just let us know.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's move to the next item. And the next item is tax, yes, valuations about our tax projections.
And so, Madam Chair, Duane Brinson is going to come and provide some insights about our growth patterns and as we plan for fiscal year twenty-three. And as you know, we've seen and continue to see, we have a very active real estate market. Our viable economy has caused a lot of people to move here. And so that's been a significant contribution to the unprecedented growth that Budget Director Keith Lane talked about. So happy to have our Tax Administrator, Duane Brinson, here to provide some additional insights.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Board. Duane Brinson, Durham County Tax Administrator. The timing has worked out in such a way that I need to mention something. Just prior to the meeting, we're having a, having a side conversation. One of the first things I did when I got to Durham County was have my leadership team read a book called WHEN, The Scientific Secret of Perfect Timing. Among other things, one of the, one of the notes from that book is that the least productive moment of the day is two fifty-five PM. And I was looking at my clock when I got up here. I'm thinking, if I have a slip in this presentation in the next few minutes, that's what it's for. That time's coming up. Board, I am happy to present some additional information and to reiterate some information on the tax valuation for this year. We've gone over a lot of this in the retreats and some other times. So you'll notice some of this, a lot of this is repeat, but it's worth repeating, because as Bud had mentioned earlier, about seventy-five percent of the budget comes from property tax. So the first slide is word-for-word repeat, but for the public's benefit, we'll run through this very quickly. So we're sitting here in late May, and no major class of property has been finalized as far as valuation. And we have to adopt a budget in just a few weeks. Real property, that's the most stable, the most verified class of property at this point. But we still have appeals going on. They're happening right now. We don't anticipate any large appeal coming up, but if it were to come up, we would have to account for that in our budget estimation. Personal property, businesses have until April fifteenth to list if they request an extension. Most businesses, especially your big businesses, they do so, because it lines up with IRS deadlines as well. So we are still calculating, still applying business values in RTP, and business values across Durham County. Public service companies, they have, we get those from the Department of Revenue around September of each year. We don't have that information just yet. And then motor vehicles, we will be getting motor vehicle values all throughout the year. So just wanted to present that information again, and just express the importance of the unknown with the tax base. I've always said it'd be much easier if we were looking a year in arrears, but we're not. We're looking a year ahead. And that makes it difficult and necessary to provide a cautionary blanket for potential appeals, exemptions that have been overlooked or not yet applied for, and those sorts of This is a new slide, but it's not new information. Notes of importance for the current fiscal year and honestly, any fiscal year. I've got three bullets here. So right now, 2022, Durham County, we've had a hot market in Durham County and everywhere has had a hot market. Current tax values in Durham County, they are based on values from January one of 2019. We're billing for 2022. Sometimes that causes confusion for the public. They think that we are They think that we are billing based on current value and that's not the case. Counties in North Carolina do a periodic revaluation of property, at least once every eight years. Uh, about half the counties have adopted a four-year schedule. So we are billing based on old values in Durham County, January one of twenty-nineteen. That is our latest appraisal day. The next countywide revaluation will be effective January first of twenty-twenty-five. Board just took action to move it to January one-twenty-five. We have started work on that. I, I sent a letter to the Board and the Manager and Claudia just recently where we are doing a one percent random sample of properties to check our records, which will help determine what kind, what type of revaluation we need to do in twenty-five. So that has started. We are working on some PR things for the twenty-twenty-five revaluation. We're starting early, but I always like to start early. That gives us more time to meet with the community, engage with the community. I see no downside in starting early. And then the last thing, and again, not new news, but countywide revaluations are not designed to generate revenue. They are designed to be revenue neutral. When, when a revaluation is conducted typically, and we're looking at this from the ten-thousand-foot level. We're looking at this from the county level, the budget level. Typically, when a revaluation is conducted, the tax base grows. And I have no doubt that it will in twenty-twenty-five as well because we've seen a hot market. The values will be six years old at that time. And I am sure the tax base will expand because of that. As the tax base expands and we capture that market value in twenty-twenty-five, we also have to publish a revenue neutral tax rate. And the Board does not in any way have to adopt that revenue neutral rate. But anything above the revenue neutral rate is a tax rate increase. Anything below the revenue neutral rate is a tax rate decrease. And I just confirmed this with Keith to be sure before I came up here. But when he showed the slides of the tax rate increase just a few minutes ago, and it showed in twenty-sixteen, there was a tax rate increase, and in twenty-nineteen, there was a tax rate increase. Those were your last revaluation years. The tax rate increase that he showed was from the revenue neutral rate, not, not the previous year rate, but from the revenue neutral rate. And so the, the revaluation is designed by statute to be revenue neutral. It's designed to redistribute the tax base, re-equalize the tax base. And this is straight from the Budgeting Office, the four categories of property. And you can see how each category has grown, at least we are projecting it to grow for the coming fiscal year. Real property, a little over three percent. Personal property, that includes boats, airplanes, business property out in RTP. That's gonna grow by about eight percent. Public service companies are expected to grow, your railroad companies, about eight and a half percent, and then motor vehicles. We've all heard about, uh, and maybe experienced, motor vehicles. Car dealerships are paying premium dollars for used vehicles. You know, it used to be, uh, the start of this market, it used to be that you'd get letters in the mail for people wanting to buy your home. Wanting, wanting to buy your home so they could resell it, re-rent it, whatever it may be. And now we're starting to see flyers, people wanting to buy your used vehicle because the shortage, it's, it's there. And we've seen that motor vehicles, all personal property, all personal property, including motor vehicles, that's revalued annually, which is why you see the growth in motor vehicles. And that does not have a rev, a revenue neutral rate associated with it because it's revalued annually. But that's driving the fifteen-plus percent growth in motor vehicles, those sales. And again, going over the holdbacks, twenty-two, twenty-three, real property growth changes. I mentioned at the onset of the presentation, we have a need for holdbacks just for the unknowns because we have so many unknowns at this point. We very well could have, you know, after billing, you know, August, September, we could have a large apartment complex come to us and say, hey, we actually should have qualified for the Brownfield exclusion, which would exempt the entire apartment complex from the tax records of being built. That has happened before. That's the reason we need holdbacks for the unknown, for the exemptions to come that we don't yet know about. The current year, and I, I mentioned at the retreat, the year of a revaluation, the need for holdbacks is greater. Because you very, very likely will experience a greater number of appeals. Even the real property tax base is incredibly vulnerable in, after, after a revaluation. So you'll notice that the holdback percentage, it goes down the farther away from a revaluation year you are. We are three years removed from the twenty-nineteen revaluation and the holdback percentage has dropped. We're at, we're at one-point-two-five percent right now for holdbacks. And I, uh, previously sent the Board, uh, history of holdbacks and trends of holdbacks. And this year, we are at the lowest point in this revaluation cycle for holdbacks at one-point-two-five percent. And you know, stating, stating what we already know here, but holding back too much reduces budgeted revenue. But holding back too little has its own risks as well. You know, I look at, um, we just had a presentation from our CFO, and each budget year is its own year. Right? We have to, as the tax administrator, I have to conservatively estimate what the tax base may be for the coming year. And that's, that's putting in allowances for potential exemptions, for potential, uh, billing of DOT property, which happens. So you have to put in these holdbacks, but each budget year is, is self-contained. Uh, and gotta have those, you have to have those holdbacks so that you don't rely on other funding sources to cover that. And you can still make budgeted revenue. This is a, a recurring slide here of partial exemptions. This does not include, while I have this, if the Board wants it, this does not include property that is fully exempt. Uh, property owned by Durham County, City of Durham, Duke, um, other federal agencies, this property that's fully exempt, that is not included in this analysis. This is partial exemptions such as your homestead, your disabled veteran, uh, mostly, mostly your residential type of exemptions. And you can see how it has trended upward over the years, going from, you know, this chart includes seven or eight years here, going from four-hundred-and-seventy-six million to o, almost seven-hundred-and-nineteen million in partial exemptions. And again, that doesn't include all the properties that are fully exempt. So the seven-hundred-and-nineteen million of exempted value, that's equivalent to about five-point-two million dollars of money in hand. It's not tax base. That is revenue, five-point-two million dollars. But those are state exemptions. Those are statutory-driven. Those are exemptions that we have to offer, that every county in North Carolina has to offer. And I will mention, um, side note, and I, I emailed the Board about this as well, but we just had a, a partnership with Duke University on how to improve our exemption experience. I'm gonna ask, uh, I have asked my Deputy Assessor to present some of those findings to the Board. And I think the community, I think they'll be well received. It's, it's good changes for the process. A much better experience to the process.
And Dwight, just a quick question. How does the low-income homeowner relief program factor into this?
That, that is not included in here. That's, that's, um, with DSS. Uh, that, you know, kind of like the circuit breaker. This, this chart shows exempted value. Uh, the circuit breaker works a little differently than this as well. But also the low-income homeowner program that's offered through DSS, that, that's a grant that's paid to us by, from DSS. So that is an exempted value, but that is another one that, um, should be considered. Just like the Duke property, just like the churches and all the other exempt property. This is real property value change by your two types, residential, commercial. And commercial includes industrial. It includes, it also includes apartment complexes, which is kind of confusing because people live in apartments. But as a property, we consider that commercial. And you can see the, uh, the general trend, you know, the residential is, the residential base is a lot higher than the commercial. But you can see that year over year, there's an increase in each category. And outside of a revaluation year, that's natural growth. That's new buildings. That is new additions. It's new property. And then in twenty-sixteen and in twenty-nineteen, which Durham County had reappraisals that, and I use revaluation and reappraisals as one and the same. Um, but twenty-nineteen also was a reappraisal year and you can see a jump in both classifications there as well.
I mean, as, as related to businesses, uh, commercial versus residential, um, what's the percentage of commercial businesses that are opening, that are, have come onboard, say, for the last twelve months?
I don't have that, but we can get it. We can compare the listings, um, year over year. We can get that and provide it to you.
Be interested to know.
Absolutely. And I, I know I did an analysis, it might have been last year, but I did an analysis of businesses that had closed, uh, trying to associate that with the pandemic.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so I have that as well, but we can get your request as well.
Yeah, it'd be, it would be interest, I'd be interested to know what kind of revenue is coming in from the commercial versus personal property.
You can break it down. I can get you that breakdown. And that concludes my presentation. And I'll take any questions the Board may have.
Thank you, Dwayne. Um, I, I appreciate you making the point about that the tax increases, um, some of the recent ones were, um, connected to when we did rebows and the revenue neutral rate. That's really important because it actually makes me remember that the last revow in two thousand nineteen, some people's property taxes actually went down. Uh, because when we did the last revow, the neighborhoods that were close to downtown, their, their property values went up. Um, and the markets, you know, the market went up, whereas there were parts of Durham, like North Durham, where, um, when we set the net, the neutral revenue rate, um, and when we set the neutral revenue rate, their taxes went down. And so even adding a one-set property tax increase, they may actually have been, um, it's just, it's complicated. So, um, I, I totally forgot about that and it, it is complicated. So thank you. Um, and this is not related to, um, your presentation really, but, um, I guess I'm, I'm just worried that, um, since when we do the two thou, twenty-twenty-five revow, that, that we've gone six years and the market's been so crazy, uh, that people are gonna be really shocked. Um, and I know you are, um, starting to communicate like, get ready, this is coming. Um, could you tell us about, what are some of your thoughts about how we keep reminding people that, you know, your taxes are based on January first, two thousand nineteen property values? Just wanted to hear, what are your thoughts on how do we keep communicating that? And that the revow is coming?
Right. So, you know, every time, we haven't done this yet, but every time somebody calls into our office, I want them to hear a greeting about the twenty-five reappraisal. And, uh, and we've done this, but we've built out a webpage that has more information on the twenty-five reappraisal. So they can, if they want more information when they call in, they can go and get it. That's, um, that's a question that tax offices have been trying to answer forever. Because when people, people associate a value increase year over year. They don't associate it with, we're doing a twenty-five reappraisal. They're not gonna think their value increased from nineteen to twenty-five. They're gonna think it increased from twenty-four to twenty-five. And that is always a struggle. That's always a challenge with the education. But you know, what I found is that everybody, and I mean this sort of facetiously, but everybody wants their value to be high. They have, they have no problem with the value being high. They want their tax bill to be as low as possible. So that's what I mean by, you know, it's not meant to, to generate the revenue. And when they get the value, that, we have to isolate that, right? Put that on an island. And we have to take the valuation appeal for what it is and, and show them. You know, one thing I've done in the past is continually, throughout the cycle, continually publish the sales that are happening in the community, the sales that we are seeing, so that they will see it too. And I think, you know, just the more that we involve the community and the more that we get out into the community, the better it will be, the better it will be received. That's been my experience at least. But it is, it's an education component that I, I don't know that anybody's found, found the right answer to yet. Because of that, uh, there is that association. It doesn't matter if it's four years or eight years. The taxpayers often see it as a year-over-year increase and not a four-year increase or a six-year increase or whatever it may be. That's always a challenge. And to your, your earlier point, we will find, and I've actually had this on a personal property in another county, um, in the early two thousands, but some properties, their value, their, their tax bill will go down. Some will stay about the same and some will go up. And it depends on how much your property has appreciated compared to the others. So the properties that, right now, if you look in Durham County, the properties that are appreciating rapidly above average. And the revenue neutral rate uses averages. So properties that are appreciating above average in our community, those are the ones that would see the increase. And the ones, like you mentioned, that, um, are below the average increase, while that's, is vice versa. So it depends on how your property is appreciated compared to everybody else in the community. As to what might happen with the tax, but everything else being equal.
Really quick follow-up. Thank you so much and I always do appreciate your, uh, expertise, uh, Dwayne. Uh, thank you so much because we know how much you have been active. Uh, you've gone out, you've sent out the letters. Everybody in your offices is really conciliatory and I appreciate that. Um, I will say, you know, right now, you know, today's election day. It's on billboards. We send out emails. It's all on Facebook. And I was at the gas station today. Lady said, why is everybody in line? I said, it's election day. She said, really? So you can tell people as much as you want to tell them, you know, but right now, you know, and, and it's not that people, they don't care. It's not, you know, they're focused on their own issues, you know? And you can tell me as much as you want to tell me that my bill is going up, but that still does not prepare me for the sticker shock, especially if I don't have the money, right? And I know that we have folks who are asking for money. We have folks who are asking for raises and asking for housing prices to go down. You know, I just think about my family members who live here. I think about myself and I live here. You know, we're getting priced out of Durham. We are absent. I don't have to talk about like some existential family member, cousin or somebody like I, we, me, immediate family is getting like priced out of Durham and we're trying to figure out how do we handle that? How do we budget? And so that's what families are dealing with now. We can talk about the one percent of, like, the small group of people. You said some and I caught that. I would imagine, and I could be wrong because I, I'm not an expert like you, but when we look at other southern cities that are going through appraisals right now, when we look at the fact that USA Today and that Forbes and Fortune, and everybody consistently ranks Durham as like a top-three place to live, what we are seeing is that the houses that are appreciating are in neighborhoods that nobody wanted to live in before. So those are neighborhoods like mine. That's where black folks are. That's where poor folks are. That's where brown folks are. It's where, it's where folks are, right? And so we can sit here and say, oh, some taxes might not go up. We are not seeing that in other southern cities. We are not seeing it. Houses, I get off of my house every day. It's, it's worth three times as much. Now, I don't know if it'll sell for that. Lord knows, I gotta stay a county commissioner, so I'm gonna be in it for a while. But, um, I want to know in your expert opinion, I heard you say some. Do you imagine, because we don't know what's gonna happen, um, even with all the work you do, thank you. But I, I wanna know in your expert opinion, I heard you say some, do you imagine, because we don't know what's gonna happen, um, even with all the work you do, thank you. I, do you think that we're not gonna see significant properties across Durham actually go up?
I think, I think, and I can't think of a neighborhood that, um, isn't appreciating right now. But we're all, you know, we're also talking about three years down the road, two and a half years down the road.
Right, and that's fair.
Yeah, you know, six years in a revaluation cycle, I mean, even four years, you would expect properties to appreciate.
Right.
Uh, and I think that would be the case for, for 2025 as well, is that generally each property I would expect in, in value, not necessarily tax bill. But in value, I would expect values to increase, um, in, in the communities at different rates like we talked about.
Right.
But I would expect the values to increase.
Last one, I know it's not your department and I'm happy that Commissioner Jacobs brought it up, the low income tax credit program, every person sitting on this diocese was a champion for it, right? When you were a champion, thank you, uh, in your office, Joanne is not here, Claudia, there was a, a whole, a whole bunch of people in this office. And this department and this enterprise said, okay, how can we figure out how we can lessen the tax burden on our most deprived citizens? Because as my daddy would always say, it's still some poor folks in the world. So when we decided to do this, you know, we looked at Charlotte, when the numbers came out, we had actually used more money than Charlotte. And we could've used more if we would've, you know, said, you don't have to be in your house 10 years, you could've been in the house seven years. See, with the three programs that you mentioned, the one that, you know, was just mentioned, uh, we still had, we had a little bit of money left over. But every person sitting on this diocese, when we did the budget retreat, said, let's look and see how we can help more people, right? Let's see how we can put more money into it. And I want us to really think about that, you know, as we're doing this. That kind of thought process of Robin Peter to pay Paul. We do have people saying raise, 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 and then put more money into this fund. So not necessarily for you per se, but we know that that fund, once we move that needle, I hope the board will move the needle and say, let's see how we can help more people. People only have to be in their house for seven and a half years. When we do rub, move that needle, we're gonna pay it, but we're essentially, you know, paying ourselves. I want folks to kind of sort of think about that. You know, why are people, why do we have a program that we just started that Charlotte has had for a long time? Why do we have so many people taking advantage of the low income tax program? Why did we have so many people answer that survey and say, hey, if you'd have changed this, we'd have done it? It's because they're overburdened and I don't want that to be missed in this conversation. And so, I mean, that was more of a statement than a question, but I super appreciate everything that your office does.
Thank you.
Okay, commissioners, we are, um, trying to get us back on the time schedule. Thank you so much, Dwayne, if you don't have anything else, we appreciate.
All right, thank you.
Presentation and the work that you do, and we will move to the next presentation.
And so next to that one, yeah, okay. We will have, um, our HR Director, Kathy Everett Perry. And, um, her staff will come up and provide some insights about our, um, employee compensation, the recommended compensation changes. As you know, this is a tight labor market and so in the recommended budget, um, is a, um, cost of living adjustment as well as an expansion of merit pay, the range level, expanding that by 1% and some leave benefits, expanding some leave benefits. So with that, I will turn it over to Director Everett Perry.
Thank you. Good afternoon, commissioners. Today, we're here to provide some employee salary and compensation data that will assist you as you deliberate for next year's budget. In addition, we'll share some benefit and compensation new items, I suppose, some upcoming incentives or benefits. In addition, we will lay the groundwork for, um, a future conversation dealing with the compensation philosophy. And that philosophy will help drive future conversations as it pertains to compensation and how we will proceed and give the manager more guidance in that regard. So the first slide is informational, of course, and it tells us the turnover rate compared to last year and this year. And we see a 3.9% increase from last year's turnover rate. A turnover rate is important for an organization because it helps us to see how frequently it is that the agency may need to, uh, retrain and get people up to speed. And during that time, you might see a lull in productivity because you're trying to get employees up and running again. So the goal is to have a turnover rate that is low. The research indicates that the average turnover rate for a governmental entity is about 18%. We have historically been below that. It has been 18% for the last four years or so. It's gone up a bit this year, but we were running behind that, we were doing well. But now we are above that 18% average and that is what is documented on this slide. There you go. The next slide talks about employee retirement and this is, of course, uh, instrumental to the turnover rate as well. In that when we have people to retire, we have to replace them and of course train people up or it could help us with our succession so that we have people in place and ready to move. Our retirees for 2021 was 45 employees and as of this year, we have 54 employees who have retired. But if we look to see how we may look next year, are ready to retire, we have 302 employees who can retire in 22, 23. 100 employees would retire with full benefits and 202 would have reduced benefits. But that's a large number, um, of individuals who may leave, so we need to keep that in mind as well.
Kathy, just a quick question, what does that mean, reduced benefits versus full benefits?
It means that they wouldn't get the maximum amount of money from elders that they would get if they waited until they met a different criteria. This slide, of course, is informational in that it talks about employee separations. These separations do not include our retiree population. It just includes employees who have left involuntarily or voluntarily. And we see that we didn't have much difference from last year to this year in that we just had an additional three. But totality, if you look at it, 246 employees leaving could be detrimental to your productivity and your ability to, uh, provide the services to the community that you're mandated to provide. So it's important, of course, for us to keep a workplace that has, uh, the ability to, to retain employees by looking at salaries as well as incentives. The manager in her budget proposed a 3.5% increase for employees who are at 75 or below $75,000. And this is informational to show that we have 1,529 employees, 83% of our employee population, who would be eligible for up to 7.5% pay increase if the budget is approved. And there are 323 employees, 17%, who would, uh, be eligible for a 6.5% increase because they are above the $75,000 threshold. This slide is the base salary rate comparison and this is the living wage, so to speak. Durham County is at $15. And I think this is, uh, a fact I know, we became, we got 15 dollars an hour back in 2016. And if we look at our peer jurisdictions, we can see where their living wage amount is. The city of Durham is at 760, um, but currently at 1,672, but planning to move to 1,760 at the beginning of the fiscal year. And then the other jurisdictions are listed there as well. We do not have any employees making $15 an hour, however, that is our living wage currently. I think our lowest earning employee is about $16 and, do you know that number? 1,678 or some change. Most jurisdictions use a calculator such as the MIT calculator to determine what the living wage would be based on the persons in the household, two parents and a child or more than that. And that would drive how they would determine the living wage in their community. I'm trying here. Is it me? Okay, so this is just an update or reminder of what we have done or what you all have done in the past year to incentivize our employees. You're all familiar with this and this is a lot of text in this slide, but just to briefly refresh your recollection. Everyone received a 3% cost of living adjustment, all employees. And, uh, there was a one-time longevity bonus as well. And the amount that you received or that employees received at that time was based on their time of service or years of service. And as you see, those who had 15 plus years, which was 441 employees, got $1,400. But our largest population were those under five years, we had 817 employees and they got $800, one-time longevity bonus. We instituted the vacation buyback program for all employees, so an employee can sell their vacation back to the county up to 40 hours each fiscal year, but they must have 100 hours left in their leave bank after doing so. We implemented employee referral bonus of $1,000 for our critical positions. Public health nurses got a $3,000 retention bonus. General services implemented a sign-on bonus package for $6,000 for certain entry level classifications such as electricians, plumbers and HVAC techs. This Office of Emergency Services, they removed that one pay ban for competitiveness. Implemented a new hire incentive, 2.5% if you have an associate's degree, 5% for bachelors, 5% for military medic experience. Also a $6,000 sign-on bonus for certain classifications. Youth Home, the counselor classification moved up one pay ban for competitiveness. The supervisor and senior supervisor moved up two pay bans for competitiveness. And we implemented a new hire incentive pay, 2.5 for associates, five for masters and 5% for, I'm sorry, five for bachelor's and master's degree. In addition, the Sheriff's Office saw some, um, or received some additional incentives. Moved nine classifications up, one pay ban for competitiveness. We implemented a new hire incentive pay for deputy sheriff and detention officer classifications. Associates 2.5, bachelors 5, military police experience 5%. And they also received the $6,000 sign-on bonus for new employees. So the column to the right identifies those particular positions or classifications where the $6,000 sign-on bonus applies. And under that, the referral bonus of $1,000 applies to any referrals and individuals who are hired for the classifications listed in that section. It's important to note that all of the classifications where the pay ban was moved up, this is EMS, the youth home, office of the sheriff. These employees working with those, within those classifications also had their salaries adjusted by 5% increase in pay. And all of that was retroactive to July 1st, 2021. These are some new employee benefits, incentives that the manager would like to, uh, implement in 22, 23. We will open our wellness clinic or center to employees and family members. Expand funeral leave from three days to five. There will be an option to purchase pet insurance on a group plan, which I think is nice. I have a new pet. And we are, she's also asking for the paid family leave program of four weeks. And this would be provided for individuals who, as listed there, need to bond with newborns, care for family members with a serious health condition or assist loved ones who may be, uh, a spouse, mistress, partner, child who's deployed abroad for active military service. This leave may also be available for employees or their minor children who may have to quarantine due to COVID-19. With the children back in school and no masses, I can tell you, having, having a kid of my own, that there are a lot of calls about your kid being exposed to other children in the, uh, schools. So that leave would help accommodate those situations. So the compensation philosophy conversation is what I mentioned earlier about setting the groundwork for you all to have future discussions surrounding this. This would talk about the market position where you would decide where does Durham County want to be in the market as we compare to our peer jurisdictions? Do we want to be at the top of the market? Do we want to be within a certain percentage of the top of the market? Which means we will always have to be aware of the market, but we may not always be at the top. It, it's okay because our philosophy would require or dictate that we be in a certain position depending on your conversations. You also could look at total compensation and how is it Durham County wants to balance salary and benefit cost? How does that look? What do you want that total amount to be when you look at an employee's salary? And if you are maintaining that based on your philosophy, you could be satisfied that you're meeting your goals and doing things to keep your employees, um, competitive. Then you might want to look at structure, the design of your pay plan. Some jurisdictions I've noticed have several play, pay, pay plans, including the city, where they may have an open plan for some classifications and they have a step plan for other classifications where those individuals may move up a step and not get paid for performance that year or COLA. But they'll move up that step until they get to a point and then they have an open plan where everybody in that plan gets a COLA or paid for performance every year. I also saw where some jurisdictions had a different plan, and I think the city as well, for their fire and police personnel. So that would be four different pay structures. So a conversation about that would be helpful also, um, to the manager as she looks at making recommendations to you all about pay structures. And finally, our reward strategy, what does Durham County want to reward and how should salaries progress over time? We did do some research and we looked at what it would, how long it would take potentially for our lowest paid or our base pay to get up to a certain level. And if we pick the $24 number, it will be 10 to 12 years based on different scenarios. So you might want to have the conversation as to how do you want your salaries to progress? Where do you want people to be within five years or six years so that you can plan for that and come up with a strategy? And how you want to reward and that could be a bigger conversation, it can include benefits. Do we want to do rewards for individuals who go get their, uh, physicals or, uh, any kind of preventive visits and things of that nature? And that's it. We're open for questions if you have any.
Thank you, Kathy.
Great.
I'll start, I have a couple. One was the, the salary, uh, let's go back, go back a couple pages here. Go back a couple slides. I think it was the incentives.
Oh, incentives.
Yeah, are those, is that the amount that people get? Is it taxed after they get visited or, or before?
Which, which part are we talking about? The, um...
Okay, let's go back a couple of the pages.
Oh, you mean with the incentives we gave to the employees?
Yes.
Like the pay?
Yeah, like the nurse retention bonus, $3,000 for dental services, are those taxed before?
They are given to them as salary, so they will be taxed just as the other pay that they receive. And if I'm wrong, Susan, okay.
The other one that I had was, um, about the, the, the gym. Families being able to attend, how, how is it structured?
So this is the wellness center, not the gym necessarily, but, you know, our clinic downstairs where families can come in. So it's not been carved out exactly, but the idea is to potentially run a little longer in the day than our normal work hours so that we can bring in, allow families to come or, you know... Or, you know, so if you have a kid who needs a physical, they didn't get that physical at their doctor, and oftentimes it's difficult to get in, but you need it because a sport event is coming up and they need it. They could come into the wellness clinic and get that physical done.
Yeah. Families need that kind of support. That's great.
And it should save us money, because they would have to pay a co-pay through Cigna at their doctor, but they could be seen there with no cost.
So they would not have to pay a co-pay?
No.
That's even better.
Yep.
Those co-pays can really get costly.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. All right. Some of the other commissioners have questions. Commissioner Burns?
Just two quick follow-ups. So that service would be, if we get there, would feasibly, or perhaps you would bring it back to us, would be available to all employees, all types of employees?
Yes.
Great. So that was, I think so. That might be something that we want to leverage, if all types, full-time, part-time. Oh, that's even better. Okay. Second thing, and this is going to be random, and you might have to go back and look at this one. One, thank you for the presentation, ladies. Thank you, as always. Thank you for whoever, you know, provided backup that I don't know about. For the public health, I know we have the nurse retention budget, right? I remember last year when we were talking to a bunch of different groups, and they were asking for like 40s, and we said, "We can do 60s." And Duke was like, "We're doing 90," right? And then Duke, which makes it hard in the market for social workers, it makes it hard in the market for nurses. And I know that everybody in here has been doing their due diligence. I know that the school's been doing their due diligence. I recently read, and I don't know who can confirm this for me, and then I talked to some folks at the legislature. One of the reasons why a lot of our hospitals can do $10,000 and $20,000 bonus pay is because they apply for federal funding, because it was need space. Like, we need these nurses, and it's a public health crisis. And I'm trying to understand, when we're doing some of these incentives, I did ask, and I remember, this was about a year and a half ago, when I, when I asked about some of these, it wasn't for nurses, it was for retention for some other positions, that they missed the deadline. I would, I would love to ask staff to perhaps go back and look and see if any of that stuff is open. I know that this, and this is again not necessarily about this presentation, but I do see that it's 3,000. If we're seeing, you know, Duke and UNC or Novant or Carolina's Healthcare actually get $10,000 or $20,000 back, because their, their incentive pay is backed by a federal grant, I would love to see if we could do the same. So, and I did talk to two LAs, and they did confirm for me, and they're trying to pull the statute, but I want to throw that out to us, because maybe we can do better on the public health front. But that, that's all. Thank y'all.
Thank you. And I've had that, I had that conversation with a couple of people at UNC, and they are, they're, what they can offer, we can't compete. County government cannot compete with the incentives. And that's happening not just at UNC, but a lot of other places. What they can offer, and what the county can offer, is we just can't compete.
I know that, but we need to...
I wish we could, but...
We'll look into and see if there's a grant that...
I mean, I know we can't do the 90. Like, I'm, I'm smart enough to know that. But if we can get that incentive bonus pay be reimbursable by the feds, let's try.
We'll look.
Right?
The other thing that I just want to bring up is about the salary between the city and the county. The salaries are always much higher with the city than the county. Is there a rationale for that?
I, I don't know it, other than the governing boards, but I have questioned it myself over time. But, you know, every board has an obligation or a mandate that the other may not have. And I'm sure that drives some of their decisions as to how they pay their employees.
Because we lose a lot of employees sometimes to the city, because we can't compete with their, with what they get paid. Commissioner Jacobs?
Thank you. I have a few questions, but just to pop on Commissioner Burns' idea. We had, we did get some grants to public health that were kind of open-ended for nurses, right? I don't know if that could be a source of...
We'll follow up. ARPA does allow for flexibility for premium dollars as well, up to, I think it's 13, I can't remember their number. Uh-huh, yeah. But we'll follow up to see how we can handle it. Our approach was to use elapsed salaries to offset it.
Yeah.
And so, but we can follow up.
Right. Well, I really appreciate all the things that you all have done and that the manager is recommending. I think that everybody, I see that you all are really trying to think outside the box and, you know, really look at what are some things that we can do. And, and it's reflected in a lot of the things that you've just presented to us. I, I'd love, and I really appreciate the manager recommending the four weeks of paid leave for families, for whatever, you know, if you're caring for any, any type of family member. I think that's really important. The pet insurance, you know, for some people, their pets or their children. And having, being a pet owner, I, you know, pet care can be very expensive for, you know, catastrophic pet needs. So I, I appreciate that. And I also appreciate you all looking at the whole big picture of a compensation philosophy. And I look forward to what you all bring back to us. I know that Commissioner Carter had mentioned, and it came, came up actually when we were getting our briefing on the budget, of this idea of a menu of, you know, for younger people, they may want a higher salary and want, you know, their health insurance to have a higher co-pay, because, you know, for, for older people, they may, you know, want less salary but better health coverage, or, you know. But just giving people more choice is, I think, an exciting idea. And I, I hope that we can come up with some way of quantifying all the benefits that Durham County does, because I know when I talk to my own kids, when they're looking at jobs, I'll be like, "Okay, but what's the benefits package? And what's the value of that? And how, how can we, you know, really promote and put a value on those?" And also just lifestyle things, like, you know, having flex time, job sharing, people working at home. I just, I'm sure you all are looking at that, but, you know. And what Commissioner Howerton mentioned, I'm not aware of the comparisons with the city, so I know we're doing the compensation study, but that would be really interesting to know. And also, the slide that you had about the going back to the $15 per hour, could we go back to that? Because I'm really glad to know, I didn't realize that we don't have any of our resident, of our workers at 15, but even 1678 is pretty low. And I think...
Actually, 1698.
1698. And I guess it would be great if we had a policy about how do we revisit that? And what is our, what is the living wage for the county right now? And developing a policy about how do we keep up with that? I'd be curious to also know, how many workers do we have that are making whatever...
The lowest rate.
...close to that? Or, and I maybe that will come up with the compensation study, but I, I really appreciate that you're looking at people making less than 75, but like, how many people are making 30% AMI, 50, you know, 60%, 80% within our own staff, which, you know...
Right.
And again, I don't know if that will come out with the compensation study, but just...
Yeah, it should come out. And I can tell you that if you approve the budget as proposed, the individual who is currently making 1698 could potentially go up to 1810.
Okay.
Could she explain that? I'm not taking, could, could you explain that one?
Okay, go ahead.
Because they're at 1698 currently, the 3.5...
That's the COLA and the...
Yeah, the COLA would take them to 1758, and if they get a 3%, which is the minimum, they would get 1810.
I just wanted you to explain that, because I know people are watching. I had done some creative math on the July 2021, but it's 18, what again? Possibly.
$18.10.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And could you, since we're, you all are up here, could you tell us about the positions that are in, requested for HR?
Oh, okay, sure. So we've requested a senior analyst, as well as a data analyst. The senior analyst is to take some of the workload that has been created from all of the positions that have been added over the years, and HR hasn't had a new position since 2015 or 16. And the request we get, we want to be able to timely respond, so that they can timely provide what they need to the community. So we ask for that position, so that we can be on par with how the county is growing. The data analyst, of course, is because everything is data, and certainly, your human resources department needs someone who can focus on data, because they have a lot of important, rich data for which they could gather. But with the work we're doing, we don't have a dedicated resource to do that.
And if I can just add to that real quickly, one of the things we wanted to look at, when we asked about the vacancy rate, we would like to have seen the vacancy by department and looking at how long that vacancy has been out there. And so that requires a lot of time spent to, to pull together the data, because we want to make data-informed and data-driven decisions.
Yay, it works. Thank you. Really, really interesting presentation, and really thought-provoking. I mean, it raises, in some ways, more questions in my own mind. It raises a lot of questions in my own mind, and not necessarily ones that are easy to answer, they're almost philosophical questions in a way. In particular, the compensation philosophy, you've given us so much to think about, and you know, I wouldn't even know where to begin to just, you know, to determine how to decide. And so, and I think we are really going to be relying on recommendations from you all to help us with that, so many different elements of that compensation philosophy. One thing I didn't real, I, I thought we already had four weeks of paid family leave. What, what do we have now? I don't know why I was thinking we already had that.
We have FMLA.
Uh-huh.
Federal government, you know, leave.
Right.
And we have paid parental, so it's only applicable to individuals who are adopting or having a baby.
Okay, that is what I thought we had, and now we're, we're broadening that.
Yes, yes.
Okay, great. And just curious, how all of the incentives that we implemented this past year, you know, mid-year, how, how are they working so far? Do we, do we feel like, is it too soon to tell? Do we feel like they're making a difference?
I don't know, but I have our recruitment expert here, who can tell us how things are going in that arena.
Good afternoon. I think we've made, we're making some progress in some areas, however, we still have some challenges in others. When we look at the public health nurses you all were speaking about, although we're offering these wonderful incentives, we're still fighting an uphill battle. There was a recent article they did on 60 Minutes on it, on the shortage of nurses we're going to be seeing. But also, when you go to these wonderful hospitals and healthcare facilities, traveling nurses are the hot item right now. And people can get money to be a traveling nurse, just to go to Greensboro and work at Moses Cone Hospital, and get that extra incentive on top of it, have their housing paid. And so you see people taking a very different approach on, to those types of positions. So we're still struggling in some areas. We are engaging in some new activities. Next month at the library, we'll have a job fair, which will be focusing on those nurse positions and seeing what we can do, and trying to also leverage additional relationships with the local universities and community colleges, to see how we could fill some of these positions. Unfortunately, it is an employee market, and employees can hop from one place to the another and get more money, because everybody is really, really desperate right now for the workers. And so we see some progress, but we're looking to see over the next year what type of progress we're going to make with all of these incentives and the additional work we're putting in and building these relationships out in the community to help us fill these positions. And making sure we, as employees, sell Durham County, because it's a great place to work. Benefits has worked really hard to put together some wonderful information when it comes to selling our compensation packages. But we have younger, the younger workforce, who, they don't really care about saving, they don't really care, they're living for the moment. And so, you know, pensions don't look so hot to them like they do to someone like myself.
Well, thanks for that. That's, that's helpful, that's interesting.
I will tell you, Commissioner Carter, that outside of the sheriff and social services, public health has the largest vacancy rate right now, with 50 vacancies, but I can't say that they're all nurses.
Wow. Wow, amazing. Just back to this compensation philosophy, that I do think is, is so very important. I really did appreciate this base salary rate comparison chart, and agree with Wendy, that I think it would be good if we had some sort of guiding principle kind of policy that said, "We're not going to slip below a certain minimum, and we're going to, you know, continue to monitor the, the cost of living and try to keep pace as much as possible." And then part of that discussion, and I, I do not know the answer to this, but I really am curious as to what my colleagues think, and not, I don't necessarily mean right now, but I, you know, I just think we should discuss this at some point, and really more of a community-wide discussion, is if, you know, as we look at how we compare with the city, I think we also, and I know we have some people, or have had anyway, they may have had to go, but school system employees who reached out to us, in particular instructional assistants, you know, how do we factor them into public, publicly-paid employees? And what level of responsibility do we feel, if any, as the county, for how to also make sure they stay at this minimum, whatever it happens to be? You know, we were at that point not too long ago, where we were trying to make it all to 15, and it was really important to our, our board and our, and our staff that we do that, and so we did. And of course, now, it needs to go up again. And so, just, you know, how to, how to make that happen, knowing that basically it's a state responsibility, but so much falls down to the county level, and we, and we really try, try to pick up where, where the state falls short as much as we can. So anyway, I just feel like part of the compensation philosophy, just among ourselves, if, if nothing else, might be some discussion on that.
So Kathy, as far as the, this, this study, the compensation, I gotta get back to my, to my page, philosophy, what do you need from us? What do you need from the board?
Right. So I think it needs to be a collective conversation amongst you all, and the manager is meeting with MAG, our consultant, and can explain that we need to go through that process. And I would suggest then that they come back and lead that conversation for you, because they will have the data to help you make the informed decisions that you need to make.
And that's another critical reason why we need to talk about a philosophy, because as we, you know, undertake this classing comp study, much, many of the decisions we will make will be based on, you know, where we want to be. Do we want to lead the market in salaries? Or what type of, you know, total compensation package would we like to have as a, a county? And so that's, I, I think we, we have to have some idea of where we want to be in order to help the, the firm, you know, make those recommendations. They can make recommendations thinking that we want to lead the market, but if we don't, then the study may offer recommendations that don't feel good to us.
Will that include the total package, or is it just the compensation? Will it be, include the health benefits as well?
Yes.
All of that?
All of that.
All right. And what's your timeline?
In terms of coming back to you all, we would have to get with the consultant, the firm, to see when they can come and do that. But they've already been retained, so it can happen sooner than later.
Any other questions or comments?
I just was going to pop with the manager just said, is, I think probably it will be the, will we have a way of knowing the cost associated with each approach?
We will.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, okay, great.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. We are, that is, Commissioner, that, that is the last presentation. All right, we are, that is, Commissioners, that is the last presentation.
Board questions? Nope, it's open for discussion or questions?
Are there questions? This is a time for questions, a request for staff, if you have any questions, or a request for staff to come back. Now is the time, we'll take about no more than thirty minutes, if necessary, if we need thirty minutes, but if we don't, we won't. See what we need. Okay, Jacob?
Yeah, I mean, I can do a lot of this through an email, but I did have some follow-up questions going through the budget, and also, some other folks that I would like to hear from, either coming or through memos or whatever, that I, when I looked at the schedule, and I can follow up with an email really specifically with that.
Sure.
But I just wanted to know how you would prefer, you know, I can do that. But yeah, that was my main thing was, I mean, I'm personally, I know that our budget is really, really tight, and I've already seen things that are not, and I really appreciate that you have recommended, you know, a no-tax increase, and I think that is important right now, but I know that other commissioners are going to have things that they see that aren't in here, so just some ideas that I have about where we may be able to get wiggle room with some things, because I know in the past commissioners have, I mean, like for instance, I've noticed that the community schools is not in here evidently, they may not have submitted something, there may be other things that other commissioners have seen, so again, I can do it through email, but that's just, those are some things that I've been looking at, and I can follow up through email.
However you would like to give the information, the Budget Office always appreciates questions from the Board of County Commissioners sent by email to us, we usually compile them and try to answer them, and then send a document back to you all answering all questions from all commissioners and get it, so would love to get an email from you, and then we will farm them out and get answers back to you. However, we're, I'm willing to, got my pen and pencil ready to go right here to answer questions or write them down, email works best for us, and we'll try to then, but we'll distribute answers back to all commissioners from every question.
And can I make one other quick reminder? The drop ad list, we will, as we are combing, because staff is combing through this as well, we will also identify if there are some minor adjustments throughout the process with reconciliations, and we'll bring that to you.
We'll have, we have an ad delete list.
What's the drop ad?
No, I'm sorry, it's ad delete, I said it wrong, I should have let.
We have a little spreadsheet.
She's back in college. Still, like, keep saying, I guess I'm tired.
She's talking about, she's talking about college, drop ad.
I'm talking about college, yeah. We're going to drop this ad.
What's your timeline for add and delete?
We have an ad delete, so we, I usually start showing it the second to the last meeting, just to give you an idea of what you, we'll hear you, you really will start, you will have some comments and questions you will send to us by email, if they have dollar amounts, for example, if Commissioner Jacob says, "I want less money to this group and more money to that group," we will put it on an ad delete list, and then show you at the next meeting what is included, like, if we hear from three of you that you want a gazillion dollars more for DPS, five hundred thousand, a million, two million, we would put that, and then we would show you the revenue source, then we might say, "Oh, there's five other things you want to add money to, and I don't have a revenue source for," or we would have to use property tax, and we'll show you that list as it builds. One, yes?
And it's staff's approach to gauge the board with the manager's appetite for various components so that it is as seamless as possible.
Yes.
But that's the part.
This is a list you all have seen for the last couple of years that we show you and say, "Okay, this is what's been added to the board-approved budget from the managers' recommended, and this is how we're planning to pay for it."
Okay.
I do want to.
I will follow up with an email then, and I think just more of a philosophical thing to what you said just now, Commissioner Carter. I mean, I, I think that, for me personally, what I see reflected in our budget, and what I'm hearing in the community, is that right now, you know, people's salaries are so important, I mean, it's for retention of staff, but also because people are really struggling right now, and, you know, with what's going on in our economy, and, I mean, just today, you know, I was at the polls this morning, working, and talked to a DSA teacher who told me that out of his colleagues, I don't know the total number, but six people are leaving. And, you know, you know, just like we're facing this vacancy issue, it's a critical issue in the schools as well, and, you know, this teacher was telling me how it's just really stressful, the kids are really stressed out, you know, COVID is still happening in the schools, and they're just short-staffed, you know, we, we know, I met with the instructional assistants today who are making like fifteen dollars an hour still, so I don't know, I mean, we don't normally, even in what's recommended now, which is like ten million dollars, we don't normally earmark the funding that we give to the schools for this, that, or the other thing, but I think one thing I hope our board, we, you know, just to think about, and maybe you can remind us, Claudia, in the past, have we actually earmarked funds that we do give to the schools for certain purposes?
We typically give the total amount and say that the funds that the schools requested dollars for various categories, our allocation can support these areas. I think last year, because it was a one-to-one match with the request and what we funded, it may have been more specific, but.
They kind of push back when we try to tell them how to spend the money, they.
There are two ways you can, you can tell them, you can give them a current expense amount, which is what you do, and they can choose to spend it how they want, and there's sort of an agreement between boards that, yes, we've talked about, this is what you're going to spend it. Then there's a PRC code, which is sort of the state allocation of how they do money by funding for teachers or instructional staff, they have all these numbers, and you can budget that way, it's still in large groupings of money, you've never done that, I suspect you would have some interesting conversations with the board if you've done that. In the past, you have also written in the budget ordinance that it is the board's intent, in the budget ordinance, that these dollars, a certain amount of dollars be spent for this, but that's just a statement to the public that it is your intent. Usually, it's just between agreements between you all that if you give four million dollars for supplement increase, that said money will go to supplement increase for teachers, if that's part of what they propose.
I'm happy you made that clarification, because I've really been struggling to make that one in the community, you know, when I did take time in February and March and April to have discussions with the majority of the school board, and after talking to graduation coordinators and teachers and social works, social workers, you know, one of the things that folks said, you know, that sixty-five hundred, if you, anybody goes back and, you know, looks at that video, you did not see pushback from our board when the original request was nine point six. I know that it is not that now, and I made the statement, I said, "I don't really have anything to say about the budget," only because I agreed with ninety-nine percent of it, and I told those at the school board that, but I said, "I didn't really want to say anything about it because I knew it would change, because it's been bait and switch for multiple years." And the day that our manager broke the embargo was the day that they decided to add additional monies to it, so I agree, and I'm happy, Commissioner Jacobs, that was the only question I had, we did not earmark any specific dollars, so it is up to the school board, like, we agree, yes, let's take teacher supplemental pay up to sixty-five million dollars, and we've given you nine point eight million dollars to do that, you know, or if you decide you want to use it to pay for two or three or five of the seven things you've asked for, it is their prerogative to do it, and we have provided that, so I am happy that we don't say, "Here, this is what you do with it, and this was the original request," and I do just want to reiterate that multiple departments did as our budget staff asked them to do and turn it in on time, and I think to kind of shirk the responsibility or put the responsibility or put out this very false narrative in the community that the county commissioners did not listen and did not talk and did not have discussion, and that our staff did not beg, it is really sad, because the only people that are getting mixed up in it are poor people, right? So, I don't know what my board is going to do, I know that our folks feel pressure, and I just, I just wish there was a process that people would adhere to, because when we get ready to do this bond, and when we get ready to do this classification study, and when the city gets ready to do that, I shutted it, last week, I almost asked in the school board meeting for folks to raise their hand and tell me how much their tax bills were. They don't know because they don't pay them, somebody else in their household does, I pay mine, you know, I pay my, I pay for everything in my house, I support family members with everything in my house, and so, when I'm talking to people that don't know how much milk costs, but they purport to help people who do know how much milk costs, it's a little bit insulting, so I know you, to the staff, thank you for everything you all have done, I imagine it's going to get blown up in the next three weeks, the staff has already told me, Commissioner Burns, do not stress it out, and I'm not going to stress it out, I'm just going to ask you all, I just, I want y'all to know this, I caught some of them a couple of weeks ago when all that stuff happened, and they broke down crying. That's the type of pressure and lack of support that they feel from us, and I just want folks to know that, so I'll have your back, I don't know how long I can have it, but thank you for all the work you did, and please know that I appreciate it.
Okay.
Question?
Question?
You can go down this way.
Okay.
Thank you, because I really appreciate your work, too, and if, you know, if we don't say that enough, you know, then shame on us, let's say it more, and let's act like we appreciate it, because I know how hard you all work. One question I had was kind of just a big, broad question. Is there a way of identifying what our expansion budget is, so to speak, not including fixed increases, you know, do you know what I mean? Am I?
I think we can get a rough dollar amount, it gets a little fuzzy around the edges. We ask for departments to give priority requests, like expansion, specifically expansion request, I think we can give you a rough number, is there, if I give you a number, and I don't mean this in any other way, I'm just trying to understand what's the value of it to you to make sure it's helpful to you?
I think what I'm kind of trying to compare is what our general fund delta is, and what is our delta in spending that's not related to fixed cost increases, and just seeing how that aligns.
I think we can give you a rough number, so again, there's a forty-five million dollar increase in the general fund, almost nine percent, from five hundred and four to five hundred and fifty million dollars. Of that, we showed you thirty million dollars.
Right.
On a few things.
Right.
And, because we didn't go through every dollar amount, and then there was another six million dollars interspersed in there that's ARPA dollars, that's revenue coming into the general fund and is doing, but we can try to get you.
And I guess also, I don't know whether or not we've decreased spending somewhere, you know, have we eliminated a program, some, that kind of thing?
That's a good, that's a good point, over the years, departments incrementally go through that exercise first, and we, we didn't have that usual speech that, you know, we first asked them, "Before you request a new dollar, revisit the ones that you have, look at realignment, look at what do we need to stop doing?" The challenge is, and we showed that chart, that we have increased pressures, so what we're seeing is that a lot of departments are just stretching themselves further and further, and with the, some of the other challenges of vacancy, turnovers, et cetera, it just puts even increased pressures, so that's something that we can evaluate, but it may take a little bit more, more time.
When you say decrease, I don't know of a particular department that had a decrease in their budget.
Okay.
Budgets may have slower increases, or the only increase they got were due to natural increases, again, if someone gets a three percent salary increase last year and then gets another one this year, do we call that natural growth versus an expansion, which is an additional position or a new car, not a replacement car, I mean, it gets really, and you get down in the weeds, it's like, what is an expansion request versus what is a replacement or continuing growth? We'll try to sum that up, David did point out, that summary document that we gave each of you commissioners, that twenty-page?
Yep.
You, you.
Yeah.
That is actually on the.
It was very helpful.
On the web for citizens to see, you can look through that document, and that largely encompasses by department expansion requests.
Okay. Well, that's probably good enough.
I think Doctor Sewell and Claudia and all of us will continue to look as there's more pressure to reallocate existing dollars, which I think is what you're getting at, how do we control growth and cost inside the county departments? And that's reorienting existing dollars from less effective programs to more effective programs, rather than continuing to do those and add something new every year.
Right.
On top of it. That is the issue that fundamentally worries me the most. How are we going to continue to always do the things we've been doing and add another layer, and then add the next year, two more layers to that, and then suddenly, we're this big, rather than staying, growing at a slower pace, but reorienting to more effective programs? That's a complicated process, and something that will take the whole county working on.
Very complicated, I know, I hear you on that. My only other question right now is related to some shortcoming of my own, and that is, I'm confused about some of these, you know, increases, like it'll say a nine percent increase here or a six percent, I don't know, like, for example, the school district has a nine percent increase in per pupil funding, but a six percent increase in total current expense funding, the general fund, at one point, it looked like it was a nine percent increase, something else looked like it was eight percent, I don't know, I'm just a little confused by some of those things.
It depends on the number, those, that's a reasonable request, part of the reason that you see a nine percent increase in per pupil funding in schools versus a six percent in their budget, is their budget goes up from a hundred and seventy million to a hundred and, or, goes up ten million dollars, remember, in pupils, their actually number of pupils from last year to this year went down, even though the dollar amount went up.
That's a great point.
So, that's a higher increase, if you do the math.
Gotcha.
The denominator lowered.
Gotcha. All right, that was easy.
And sometimes, when you look at all funds, there's seven hundred million dollars, so even if the increase is more, it's a bigger, it's.
And the reason I ask that is, I am trying to look and see, in general, are we equitably distributing the increases, right, you know, so is it about the same across the board? Not exactly the same, some people, equity, right, doesn't mean equal, it means equitable, and so, just, that's another reason why, I want to be sure I'm understanding the.
Equitable is a, and that's a great question, and defining what equitable means, certain people might say, "Oh, the general fund budget went up nine percent, my budget on average should go up nine percent." That's not necessarily the case, because chunks of revenue that make up a nine percent increase in revenue, remember, we have to have a balanced budget, so there's forty-five million, some of that revenue is automatically directed to certain departments, intergovernmental revenue to support foster care or public health, so it's not like the Budget Office gets nine percent of intergovernmental revenue that's allocated for something else, six million dollars in ARPA money, that's not equitably distributed across every department, the Budget Office didn't get some percentage of ARPA money. When we talk about equitable, it's like, what do you, dollars do you have control over? You have control over property tax and largely sales tax money, and your occupancy tax revenue went up, but it's dedicated to pay for capital financing plans, so it's not equity, equitably distributed to every department, so we have to set a, and this is workable, we can set a formula that says, what are the revenue sources that we have available to us that aren't already distributed by board policy that we can call equitably, equitably distribute the growth of? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
It's not just nine percent of the general fund, it's, let's say it's property tax and sales tax, if those two grow thirty million dollars, what's an equitable distribution of that thirty million dollars?
Right.
If you so choose to go down that route.
And that also speaks to the complexity when we start comparing jurisdictions, and so, one jurisdiction may calculate it one way, another calculates it a different way, and trying to, to do the comparison can get tricky, so.
Definitely.
We try, so some. We try, so some things you, we, you may see us shy away from, so, so in certain spaces you will just, you won't see certain comparisons, is it?
And just hopefully clarify, sometimes we use the percentages in comparison more for context alone, as opposed to this drove the decision, simply because of what General Manager Hager just pointed out. Comparing across jurisdictions is a dream, and it's a great one, but it is really complicated. We were looking at.
Wake County.
Wake Counties, everyone heard, I'm sure, about their school funding that came out a couple of weeks ago. Trying to, trying to compare that to Durham County would be an exercise in multiple double-digit hours probably to really get down to. It can be done, but in the end, is that, is that gonna change the decision-making here? And that's the, that's the nature of these percentages and how they're, you see them differently, so, and it's just to try, hopefully provide a little context to.
Well, when we get, when we get a million people, we can compare with Wake County, so.
I would like to, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Burns.
Just to that point really quick, because they quantify, I brought this up with the school board and I brought it up to y'all, you know, when they say that they do fifty, their school board, they're quantifying debt service, we don't quantify our debt service, and I, so, yeah, they quantify debt service, they quantify their, they quantify like a million other things, and then also, they have nine major municipalities that they do cost share with, so those were the two things, that was the most, I said, "How are they getting such a high percentage?" And then I realized, they're not giving it to the schools, they're giving it to debt service, and then they're just telling that to the newspapers, so, I do say, like, we can't compare, I mean, because they're not using, we're doing operational dollars, and they're doing operation, interest, principal, debt service, everything.
Even the per pupil comparison became.
Yeah, the per pupils off at that point.
General Manager Hager and I were looking at it, and it's just, you have to recalculate ours or theirs to have an equal comparison.
And so those are some, because we want the public to understand, because they see the numbers popping up everywhere too, so, some of these we will take on.
I have one last question, and it's not for you to answer right now, but it's, what is it that, what is it that we'd have to cut out to come up with any more resources and not raise taxes? We don't, I'm not looking to cut anything or cut back, but what is in the budget that would be able to come up with two million dollars?
If, if.
I'm just throwing that out as a thought.
And I will say to give Keith time to get himself together.
I, I, I don't want you to talk about it right now, just throw out there, because we're gonna get ready to go.
Right, right, right.
I just had one quick.
Thank you for asking the question. Oh, no, I didn't mean, thank you for having the leadership to ask the question, when some of y'all sent emails out tonight to your friends, I wanted to be clear that it was Chair Howerton that had the courage to ask the question, so.
Yes ma'am, Commissioner Jacobs.
Well, I, and I, that's, that's gonna, I have some ideas, so I will put that in my email, but anyway, I just want to say, I love all of the graphs that you all come up with all the time, and I think this is, is this a new one?
It is actually one that I think I made for Commissioner Carter multiple years ago and showed her and showed you all, and I thought I would add it just so you would understand what makes up general funds and movement of funds, and, and I just thought it would help you understand the framework, so yes, I threw it back in the budget.
Well, thank you, and because I was really excited to see public art fund added in here.
They are getting an initial allocation of five-hundred thousand dollars for twenty-two-twenty, twenty-two-twenty.
I appreciate that being very clear on this, but this is a really great graph, it really helped me a lot, so, and all the graphs do, but I thought this was a new one, thank you.
We use it with new budget analysts, so consider yourself all entry-level budget analysts, once looking at that graphic.
Ask my pastor what's that? If all minds are clear, I adjourn this meeting.
Right, we gonna make it clear.